Is called to order at um six oh five. Um, I'm going to ask uh uh our city manager, or actually our city attorney to do the prayer today. And our uh city manager to do the pledge of allegiance.
Hey, um, that's our all bow our heads and um start the the prayer. Um, Lord, uh bless this meeting of the city leader leadership. We pray that uh we apply all the wisdoms in uh making a correct decision and the correct and the right decision for the city. We pray that uh that we act in kindness and over cruelty, uh we act in um selflessness over selfishness. Um, we also pray for the people of Ukraine who are suffering uh at the hands of one single madman. Uh, we also pray for end to this pandemic that is causing unnecessary suffrage for the whole world. We pray for the city, pray for the state and our country. Amen.
Okay, we can have everyone stand, face a flag, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the applied of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bye. Uh, Mr. Clerk, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Montero.
Uh huh.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ray English.
Here.
Councilmember Valentine.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, um, City Manager Von Norris, you have a presentation on the agenda today. Go ahead, sir.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Jan Vogel. Yes, excuse me, Executive Director of the South Bay Work Enforcement Board. At this time, he's gonna uh conduct the presentation regarding customer service. At this time, I'd like to hand it over to you, Mr. Vogel. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you, Mayor and Council and City Leaders. It's a pleasure to be here today. Haven't been here in a long time and um it's always nice to make a presentation, especially a happy presentation to the City Council. Um, as as many of you know, the South Bay Workforce Investment Board has created a customer service training course that is delivered online utilizing its very successful blueprint for workplace success model. The training provides a great refresher of the basics and allows individuals to discover their customer service strengths as well as their areas that need improvement. The training is self-paced, interactive, available in English and Spanish, and involves ten lessons, pre- and post-assessments, and a comprehension comprehension quiz for each lesson. Topics covered include what customers want, maintaining a positive attitude, listening to customers, customer service via telephone, handling difficult customers, and making a positive first last first and last impression. The online training takes about five hours to complete. The South Bay Workforce Investment Board offers offers this class to South Bay cities at no cost for employees' training for up to one year. The city of Hawthorne was the first city to take advantage of this. And since then, there are other cities that have come forth uh that want to take advantage and have taken and are po- currently taking advantage of this program. I'm excited to announce today that a hundred and four employees from the city of Hawthorne from seventeen departments have completed the training. Each participant has received a certificate signed by myself and our board chair as well as the Hawthorne Mayor Alex Vargas and the City Manager Von Trey Norris. On the screen, there it is, I would like to show a copy of the certificate that we are framing for the city to be hung in City Hall to acknowledge this accomplishment. On behalf of the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, I want to congratulate all the employees who completed the training and want to thank the City Council for offering this course to the city employees. Of course, we are proud of what we've been able to accomplish. We're more proud of what the city of Hawthorne employees have been able to accomplish. And of course, this is one of the many things that the South Bay Workforce Investment Board do for our member cities. So congratulations to the City Council for having the foresight to offer this. And congratulation to the city employees that have been able to accomplish this. And we hope they're better employees and provide better service to the community uh for completing this course. And that's the presentation.
Okay, um, I'm gonna start off uh saying thank you, uh, thank you so much, Jan, for helping organize this, uh, for offering it to the cities and for getting the curriculum together for um us to have been able to take that. And I wanted to say, man, I miss you. I wish we had you here in the city. I think that was a big mistake by some of the uh members of the council at that time. Uh, I wish you were here, but the good thing is that you're still serving us, helping us out, and working with us. I had a question with regards to this uh customer service training. Um, after employees have gone through this, what kind of uh differences should we expect when it comes to uh the customer service? What things that you that you know that it might be measurables that we might be able to expect?
Well, you know, I hope that you see a big difference. I mean, you're gonna have to ask the employees that to what they what they got out of it, but um we, you know, it's it's very interactive, so they should be able to be able to tell you what difference they're gonna be able to see. A hundred and eight, I believe there were a hundred and eight individuals that started the course and a hundred and four completed it successfully. And um it's part of a larger blueprint for workplace success and we've taken the customer service part of it, out of it. And um and they did a great job and I think that they've learned a lot. Uh, you'll have to ask the employees that. And um most of the people that have taken it have been very happy with it, so we think that they're gonna treat the customers better. Uh, they're going to learn the elements of what, how to treat the customers, how to treat the people that call the city.
Okay, okay.
And we want them to uh treat them, we want everybody that calls the city to be treated like they're special. Everybody that calls the city should be treated that way. Want them to treat, just like they come into the one-stop center, want them to treat though they just won the lottery. Treat them special and uh and that's what we want. Every employer, every every individual that calls the city, we want them to be treated in a special fashion. And we're sure that's how you want them to be treated.
Absolutely.
That's how we convey that information to them, so.
And since it's a a byproduct of blueprint for success, uh, I can personally attest based on what I've seen that that is a great uh curriculum, so.
Thank you.
Definitely gonna have a great benefit, so thank you once more.
You're very welcome.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Valentine, then Councilmember Montero.
Thank you. Good evening, Jan. Thank you so much for coming and thank you for offering this program to our city. Um, I just want to thank you for all of the many years of service you have given to our cities, our businesses. Um, this is just one more um program that you're offering that um that can that that is for the benefit of of the cities and the businesses. Um, I want to thank you for all of the years of service. Um, and also to congratulate you on the many awards that your organization has won. And I also want to um reiterate what the mayor said. I am so sorry that you're no longer uh an integral part of our city, although we do benefit from your programs. Um, and and we do it as often as we can, but um we miss having you as part of the city, so.
You're very welcome. And we're here, we're here for you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Councilmember Montero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mr. Jan Vogel. How you doing?
I'm doing okay.
You look good.
Well, I'm getting older.
All right, all of us getting older. Well, I'm gonna have to uh echo sentiment of the mayor and uh Councilwoman Valentine uh for your service. You know, you have been a a godsend to all the cities in South Bay that is a part of the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. All the service that you provide, you know, providing job training uh to the people, um aerospace, you know, uh internships, all of these beautiful things that the South Bay with us over there uh with one stop. And like you said, customer service is important, is a number one, is our face of any city. When and somebody call or comes in, um, you know, customer service is a priority. Is the one that will open doors to many things that not just for the for the constituent, but for the for the new business, for the new development. So it is integral part of all the service that we provide, so that's the number one. So I appreciate all the effort that you put into create this program. And I think that you are very successful and we will be successful based on your own character. Uh, so again, thank you for your service and I think we'll see you tomorrow, right?
Right, I'll be there tomorrow.
Yeah, congratulations on that Congresswoman's uh money that's coming to you and to us also.
You're very welcome.
Tomorrow. Thank, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Ray English.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vogel. Uh, appreciate the curriculum on customer service. That was something that uh early on uh we discussed as a council and more importantly in the new leadership of uh our city manager and our city attorney. I'm glad that there was over a hundred and four um employees that took the initiative to want to learn more customer service and phone etiquette. I think that's an important skill set to have and to include in your resume moving forward in any career you have. I'd like to see that link ultimately forwarded on to all our council members, if you would, please, Vaughn. Um, uh again, we commend you for for your work and it loo- it it looks like you're doing well. And uh, thank you so much for, again, your leadership in um the program and the services that you offer.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much for the kind words.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, and uh, Mr. City Manager, how about you? Um, these are employees that work under your uh your supervision. Uh, what's your feedback on this?
Outstanding. I'm very happy with the 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 buy-in for employees to take the opportunity to learn a new strategy. I think, you know, what comes out of a additional training is a a additional uh ways to deal with uh customers, residents, in different situations. I think, you know, as a city, we're always growing and continue to grow. There's a thing called continuous education. I think, you know, the city and the employees made a mark that we're have the buy-in to uh grow as a city. So thank you, Mr. Jan Vogel, for your time. We look forward to any new items you have that can benefit the city. Thank you again.
Very welcome.
Thank you, uh, Jan, and we'll see you tomorrow, okay?
Okay, Mayor.
Great report. Thank you.
Alrighty.
Alright.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Clerk, can you read the guidelines for oral communications, please, sir?
Yes. Pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies, as a body, should have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
Okay, first speaker. How many, uh, what do you have?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yeah, we received uh no emails regarding public comment for tonight's agenda. We have two speakers for tonight for oral communications.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Our first speaker is available.
Ms. Fernandez?
Yes.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. Uh, Lady Fernandez here. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, I just wanna start off with um Hawthorne citizens are overwhelming classified as disadvantaged by the federal government based off latest census data. Many of the hardest hit areas are zoned high density residential located near industrial and commercial zones. The residents residing in these areas will continue to suffer as long as our city lets them. As long as Hawthorne zoning allows developments that do not enhance and better the lives of those who live there, the cycle will continue. The residents of Hawthorne deserve quality businesses, well-designed and constructed houses, tree-lined streets, regardless of if they live in a disadvantaged area or not. I hope you will stand tall and be the voice of the people who voted you into office. Councilman Montero, you ran on low-high density apartments. We will hold you accountable otherwise. Please support Hawthorne for all the residents who call it home. This is in regards of your remark, Montero, asking us to view the relabeled environmental justice report, which is no different than the one shown ten years ago. But you're already ten years behind your promises, Councilman. Thank you very much. Good night.
Uh, next speaker?
Next speaker is available.
Thank you. Ms. Santana? Mrs. Santana, you have three minutes.
Hi, um, I just wanted to say, okay, my name is Angela Santana and I'm a board member of the North Hawthorne Community Association. And this year, um, what we want to do is invite the community and all our council members to come out to our fifth annual Easter egg hunt. For the last two years, we've been putting the egg hunt on hold um because of the pandemic. And so this year, we are very excited that we have to bring it back. Since it's an activity and an event that uh is kinda near and dear to our hearts and also to our community that comes out and enjoys a day of um with their kids to take pictures with the Easter bunny and also have some time to hang out at our lovely park. Um, it is going to be Saturday, April second, from eleven AM to two PM. It is going to be held at the Eucalyptus Park, uh, one-two-one-zero-zero, South Inglewood Avenue, Hawthorne nine oh two five oh, and we are inviting everybody in the community to come out. There's going to be games, um, prizes, uh, egg hunts are gonna happen every half hour. And we hope that our council members would be uh would join us for that day.
Is that the end of your comment, Ms. Santana?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have a good night.
So we'll wait for thirty seconds?
Yes.
Um, anybody who would like to call, please call now. I'll give you an extra ten seconds to be able to actually place your call and reach our city clerk's office. I'm gonna give a fifteen more seconds, just um. Having no more speakers, I declare oral communications closed. Mr. Clerk, can we have your consent calendar, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have four items on my consent calendar. Uh, they are item six, seven, eleven, and twelve for your consideration and approval. Item seven, approval of waiver of ingredients of resolutions and/or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item eight, city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item eleven, resolution number eight-three-four-five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, Ca- uh, California, re-ratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency by Governor Newsom on March fourth, twenty twenty, and re-authorizing remote teleconference meetings the City Council, Commissions, and Committees of the City of Hawthorne for the thirty-day period beginning March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, through April twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, pursuant to the Ralph M. Brown Act and Assembly Bill number three-six-one. Item twelve, resolution number eight-three-four-six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, proclaiming March twenty-twenty-two as Women's History Month for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second.
Um, it's been moved by uh Councilwoman Valentine, seconded by Councilwoman Montero. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. That concludes my consent consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, now we have the bid section of our agenda. Mr. Clerk, can you read the uh single item that we have, please?
Yes, I can. Uh, now is the time and place to declare publicly received sealed bids for general maintenance. Three-year contract, project twenty twenty, sorry, twenty-two dash zero five. Public Works Department Declaration of Publication filed. There was one bid received. Bid was accompanied by bidder's bond. Bid was opened on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. The price is as follows: Martinez Landscape Co., Inc., three million seventy-three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents.
I'll make the motion, but I have a question for City Manager. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, it's uh been uh moved and second, seconded, uh, City Manager Norris. The general maintenance consists of uh what maintenance? The 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 greenery aspect? Because Martinez Land- Landscape is a landscaping company, or is there additional type of maintenance that they will cover, sir?
Yes, it'll be uh street projects, hard um hard landscaping throughout the city. Uh, all needs for our residents, our thoroughfares. It encompasses a lot of different items. Um, I can have our public works director speak on that if you need additional information.
Well, I'm I'm just, I'm just simply curious if it's just more than just the greenery aspect.
No, it's more than greenery. Uh, Alan, you mind chiming in on on what the contract of scope of work includes?
Yeah, definitely want just the residents to know where the money goes, that's all.
Uh, yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and uh City Council members. Um, in- including as part of the contract is um, they also do a lot of uh quick removal sidewalk, curb and gutter driveways. Uh, again, they do a lot of landscaping. Um, they also do some paving work uh that our staff cannot uh attend to. Um, they also do a lot of sprinkling, uh sprinkler system repair. Um, they also do some radar sign installation for for the for topic works. Um, so like Vaughn said, our city manager said, uh, it does include uh a lot of different type of construction and work for the city.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes, of course.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, awesome. Um, next, we have no public hearing, so uh we'll skip that section. Uh, but we do have ordinances. Uh, Mr. Clerk, can you read item fifteen, which is the single ordinance that we have, please?
Alright, ordinance number two-two-three-zero, second reading, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending sections eight-point-fifty-point-zero-ten, eight-point-fifty-one-forty, eight-point-fifty-one-fifty, eight-point-fifty-one-sixty, eight-point-fifty-one-seventy, and eight-point-fifty-two-hundred of chapter eight-point-fifty, Stormwater and Urban Runoff Pollution Control of Title Eight Health and Safety of the Hawthorne Municipal Code to expand the existing stormwater management and discharge control requirements and impose imposing rainwater low-impact development lid strategies on the projects that require building, grading, and encroachment permits for adoption.
Uh, I make the motion.
Second.
Roll, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes, sir.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Alright, thank you, Mr. City Clerk, on that. Um, but now we have general matters, uh, which is our topics of general concern to the city. They're neither ordinances or resolutions. A general matter is basically uh a presentation or an item that wouldn't fit anywhere else, but that's to inform us. Okay, and it's usually a report. So uh, Mr. Clerk, can you read item seventeen for the record and then we'll ask uh Feliz Lopez to come and give us her presentation? Or introduce the presenters?
Yes. Uh, annual comprehensive financial report of the City of Hawthorne for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, uh.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead. Well, we'll we'll go ahead and uh have your report. I'll just make the motion just to accept this after you um. Um, I'll I'll make the initial motion, but go ahead and make your presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Um, I'll just highlight three items, uh, three important items in the financial report and then I'll turn it over to our- and then I'll turn it over to our auditors from Rams. Um, the general fund revenues exceeded budgeted revenues by approximately fifteen point four million in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, while the general fund expenditures came in lower at approximately five point one million. Um, we saw the largest decrease in the Police Department, which was one point seven million. Um, the second item is that our, uh, unrestricted fund balance is at five fifty-seven point eight million, which is an increase from June of thirty, June thirty, twenty twenty-one, um, I'm sorry, twenty twenty of forty-four point six. Um, and finally, our, the, the city's net position reflects a deficit of thirty-seven point one million, um, which is an improvement from the prior year of thirty-eight point four. And this deficit reflects liabilities which exceed assets on hand and is related mainly to pension and OPEB liabilities. Um, and I will hand it over to Mister, um, uh, sorry, to, to Terry and to, to Garden from Rams, um, our auditing firm.
Mister Terry would love to do it. Um, good evening, honorable Mayor, City Council, City Staff. Um, we appreciate the opportunity to serve the city, and as, as Felice said, it was a very good year for, for the city, um, financially. And Gardena Durant, who's the audit manager, is gonna give a brief, uh, slide presentation.
Right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Um, Eric has a presentation for us. So if you can, all right, Eric, if you can go to the next slide, please. So just wanna go through, um, the different aspects of the financial statement audit and just go through the first part, which would be the responsibilities of the auditor, us. Um, our responsibility is to audit the city's financial statements in accordance with U.S. General Accepting Auditing Standards and government auditing standards. Um, we plan the audit to express opinions as to whether management's financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and we provide reasonable assurance, not absolute. Um, we're happy to report that we are reporting the highest level of assurance if you have gotten. We have an unmodified opinion expressed. Um, in some cities, some people call it a clean opinion. Um, formally, it's called an unmodified opinion. Um, Eric, if you could go to the next slide, please. From there, we just wanted to talk a little bit about our audit process. And, um, every year, we update our understanding of the cities. We review the city's internal controls and go through various transaction cycles, and we perform walkthroughs just to see anything that has changed in the city. For example, in these past few years, um, due to all the different changes related to COVID, then we would go through and we would ask additional questions to see how COVID has affected your internal controls and just making sure that we're looking at things closer and looking at the different items that got affected by the changes. Um, we use data analytics on cash disbursements, um, in order, we have software in order to identify any inconsistencies in your transactions, and that helps us look at a larger, um, you know, a, a, a larger area instead of just like doing all the analytics on our own. Um, we do do a, conduct a detail of your, um, records. So as we're going through, we will confirm different balances, and then we'll ask for backup as we deem appropriate. Um, we usually inquire about different events and transactions, anything that looks, um, irregular or significant, and we will make sure that we ask for all the backup for all those different areas. Um, we also read the minutes for the City Council. Um, in your case, we had to go through some of the agenda packages because all the minutes weren't available to us. But we try to go through all the different agenda packages and make sure that we go through all the details of everything that got submitted to the City Council's approval, so that we can see that any items that we see on the financial statements that are material did go through the City Council, appropriately go through the City Council, and it was properly approved. Next slide, please. So the required communications, um, every year, we issue the SASS one fourteen letter to those charged with governance, and it basically tells you, um, everything that we did in an audit, if we had any issues with the management. And we're happy to report we have no issues with management. They have been very transparent with us and forthcoming, and they are great to work with. So, you know, one of the things that we do as we come in is just kind of see, um, how well management's working with us and withholding information from us, and we've never had that issue with the management of the city. Um, we also issue, um, a significant deficiencies or material weaknesses report if applicable, and we're happy to report that we didn't have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses to report. The city has pretty solid, um, internal controls at the financial statement level. Um, we also assist management with the preparation of the financial statements every year, and we do so and try to keep, you know, management on top of all the different changes as far as, you know, um, disclosures and different, um, reporting requirement that happened every year. And it's hard for cities to stay on top of those things, but, you know, as auditors, we, um, go through tons of CPE in a year just to make sure that we stay on top of all the keep, to make sure that your financial statements are as transparent as possible. Next slide. And that is the end of our presentation. Just when, if you have any questions, just please let us know.
Are there any questions? Let me see if there's anybody that has their hands up. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Have a question, so I mean, that just makes sure we're clear, all those reports regarding the, uh, annual, um, financial statement that's on the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Uh, who prepared the, the financial statement?
We prepare the financial statements, um, with the details provided by the city. So we compile all the information into that report.
So, okay, so I was misunderstood, so I appreciate the clarification. So I thought we prepared the, the annual, the financial statement, and you guys would audit it, but you guys prepare it.
Yeah, so it just depends. So it, it's sometimes, you know, like, if the financial statements could be prepared by the city, but because it's so time-consuming, as long as we get all the details and we have all the information, then we will make sure that, um, the city stays in compliance with all the reporting requirements by compiling the information for you.
How do you audit a report that you create?
We don't create the details related to the report. We just, it's, it's, it's just basically the roll-up.
We get, uh, trial balances from the city. We audit those trial balances, and then we compile the statements. We probably do, uh, twenty-five city audits, and out of those, only two prepare their own statements. So as long as you have someone on staff that can understand how to do them, which Felice does, and, um, and so that way, we, we're able to compile those for her, so.
I have a question. Oh, Mayor Pro Tem?
I'm done.
Um, Felice, I think we've talked about-
I have a question, uh, Mayor.
Yeah, I'll, 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 let me ask mine real quick, and I'll go over to you. Um, oh, okay, ladies first. Go ahead.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, I, I'm wondering if you can explain this. I, I, I see on page three that we have a deficit as to fund balances. Can you explain that?
Right, that's, uh, the unrestricted fund balance, and that is, um, that's due to the liabilities that the city, um, has in OPEB and pension obligations, and they have to be noted on the statements. So it shows a higher liability than we show in assets.
But what happens on this statement is, it's the whole city combined on, on a full accrual basis, like a normal business, whereas the fund statements don't have the debt for the OPEB and the pension. So you have the OPEB, which is the, uh, other post-employment benefits, which is the, uh, healthcare for retirees, plus the pension. And there is no, the, the liability is more than the asset. So like, if you issue normal debt, you would build something, and so you'd have the asset and the debt. But here, um, there is no asset affiliated with it, but just the debt. And that's, if you take that hundred ninety-six thousand out, which is, if you look above a few, you see the net pension liability-
Million, right? Hundred ninety-six million?
Hundred and thirty-nine million, if you go about halfway up to the liabilities a quarter. So you have the net pension liability of four point five million and the OPEB liability of a hundred and thirty-nine million. So you're looking at a hundred and forty-some million there, so.
So is this something that, uh, is unavoidable? I mean, I'm trying to understand why we, do we run this all the time? Do we always have this deficit?
Ever, ever since, um, the, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board issued GASB thirty-four, and these programs like the PERS and the OPEB, they're a pay-as-you-go, so the liability isn't due. Um, it just has to be shown, and so if you go to the fund statements, you'll see the governmental funds where you don't have a deficit. So if you could turn to page, um, page twenty-three. So you, you can see your total fund balance of the general fund, which is your main operating fund is just a little under sixty million dollars, of which fifty-seven million is unassigned. And so that's truly the financial position you're in on, uh, as the government operates. And so then these statements are then converted to the full accrual. And if you look on page twenty, twenty-five, these adjustments then, um, convert it to that fifty thousand, the deficit. So you can see that. And so it adds on the capital assets. It adds on all the pension-related debt, the OPEB-related debt. And so, and, but the government basically operates on modified accrual, which is your general fund. And in the general fund, you're in very good shape at fifty-seven million, so.
Yeah, I mean, one of, one of the reasons that you might not remember this huge deficit in the past was because about six years ago, that's when GASB, um, sixty-eight, and then GASB seventy-five came into play. Before that, you weren't required to put your full pension liability or other post-employment liability on the books. And so at that time, when that changed, most cities' net positions went negative because, you know, it was a huge liability that they were adding to the books. So-
Actually, m- most of the L.A. County cities that have been around a while that have police and fire and, and, and publics, um, uh, public safety contracts, so it happens quite a bit. But the good thing is, it's, it's, it's a pay-as-you-go, and so the city's on top of that, and, and the city issued bonds, what, two years ago, Felice?
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, it helped cut down on that, um, pension liability, and cut down on the annual payment that's due, and saved the city a lot of money with that issue, so.
I, I'm gonna ask a question. Councilwoman, are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Um, is it not true that, uh, the reason that that unf- unfunded, uh, liability for the, for the employee, uh, benefits or pensions? Isn't it true that that hasn't, uh, it's showing a deficit because as we finish the year, um, those, uh, specific accounts that meet and address this, eh, these, uh, these monies end up coming in? So it's, you said pay-as-you-go, but since we're constantly bringing in revenue at the end of the year, at the end of the term, we end up meeting those liability, those li- uh, liabilities, right?
Well, the, the pay-as-you-go is the current year, um, payroll. When you do run a payroll, you have your first costs, and then you have the people that retired. That's what we're talking about, pay-as-you-go. And so if, if you look at your PERS report, which we'd be happy to, um, print one out and maybe do a workshop for council someday, but you, you'll see that this is making up, um, path things. And so the, the pay-as-you-go is only that current year's, like, if you have retiree people, those people that are eligible, and they get paid out, and then the city budgets that, pays that. Um, the CalPERS, the city budgets that, when, when you adopt your budget, you adopt your payroll, you adopt all your liabilities. And so there is, um, there, there is a way to cut your OPEB if you were to, um, start funding some of that.
And we have, uh, council has approved a trust-
Oh, good.
-implemented, so that will, that will show in next year's financials.
Perfect, yeah. And so, and once you do the trust, then you can get a higher rate of return. And, because I think without a trust, you have to use like a one percent rate of return. And so that'll cut your liability quite a bit, too, as well. And I was finance director for City of Rolling Hills up until last year, but we put three hundred thousand in that trust. It's small compared to your city, but, um, we doubled our money in, in seven years, and so.
Is it going twelve percent return in the trust?
Yeah, 'cause you're not, you're not stuck to the government code in those trusts. You can invest in, in other stuff, and so.
Interesting.
Yeah, and we, we chose their program at a moderate rate, and we averaged about six, six and a half percent rate of return. So.
The cash fund balance, right now, we have the cash fund balance at fifty-seven, eight hundred thirty-seven thousand, correct?
Right.
And, uh, remember, we, I think we addressed this, uh, we, we had a, what was the low point at which? What was the lowest point that we had in recent times? Wasn't it like a five million, ten million, Felice?
Um, back in, yes, it was probably in twenty-ten or, or two thousand nine.
Okay, and so gradually, I guess, uh, the fact that it's increased to, like, what will we say? Five hundred, six hundred percent by now, that, would you consider that, Mister Shi, a good thing?
Um, it felt very good, um, especially coming out of the pandemic. And, and if you look at your un- assigned fund balance, just under fifty-eight million. Your expenditures last year were sixty-two million, so they recommend at least two months of expenditures, and you guys almost have a full year, so very, very, very well, very good.
It's more than, uh, we, it's more than the minimum requirement, right?
There, yeah, yeah, you, 'cause what happens is, is property taxes and, and your, your big revenues don't come in till December, so you need to be able to operate on a cash standpoint until you get those, so. At minimum, you'd want two months, but you guys are almost at eleven, a little over eleven months, so very, very sound financial position.
Some of our neighbors here in the South Bay have one or two-month types of, uh, cash fund balances, so they're, that's when they, uh, ring the alarm bells, but I guess we're doing pretty darn good.
Very well.
Better than I expected, also, I guess. We're doing something, right? Okay, uh, Councilwoman English?
Mayor Pro Tem, did you wanna go first? Did you, your hand up?
I had another question, but I can go after you. It's not again.
Let's just, uh, spread it out, and then we'll go back to Mayor Pro Tem right away. Is that cool?
Um, so I had a question. I'm not sure who to direct this to. However, um, on page five of six, at the very top, it indicates that there's a, um, uh, impacted overall positions, and it says decrease, decrease, decrease on the last, uh, three items, which is Mayor, City Council, Police Department, and Public Works. Can you just give, um, uh, how, how, how did we decrease on that? Was there something that we did that maybe we need to continue doing, or?
That was just during, uh, the height of COVID, and most of the departments were spending, um, you know, as conservatively as possible. Um, so that's why we had, uh, the, the largest decrease was in Police Department, and that was because the city received funding for about a million dollars in police services.
Okay.
Counsel, uh, Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, this question is really, uh, um, for the City Manager. Um, and correct me if I'm, I'm wrong as far as topics or subjects or, or, and all that stuff, but, uh, we're talking about OPEB, right, and, and unfunded liabilities and stuff like that. Was there a time in the past where we discussed, um, considering making some changes to, I guess, the promises that we provide to retirees? Hmm, that sounds, uh, somewhat familiar, like a previous conversation we had, to kind of reduce that liability.
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but I'll work with Felice, the Finance Director, to recall that conversation, and we can bring that to the next council meeting.
No, not that I'm making any super suggestion, but I, I remember, it may, could have been the previous City Manager had brought that up as, um, something that we might wanna look at, um, and making sure that it's consistent with, I guess, other cities.
Yeah, I remember.
You remember that? Yeah, so if there's any information along that, I'd definitely like to, to get it.
Okay, noted. Thank you.
Um, okay. Uh, Councilwoman Montero?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, great report. Thank you very much. Um, so that funding liability will continue to go up, right? If more people retire, right? Every time people retiring, that, that, uh, that item will go up, correct?
It, it will, but, uh, with the trust, that number, uh, will reduce substantially once we implement the trust.
So that trust is that one, that one fifteen, right?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and the other thing, Felice, is we have to give credit to the people of Hawthorne, right? Because of that major age that they passed increased the sales tax. And then we see that the, um, one of the biggest thing, revenue, is the sales tax, because even during the pandemic, the sales tax didn't go down. Uh, and so the fact that the people of Hawthorne gave us that, that, uh, major age, uh, so we have to thank the people of Hawthorne to keep us going on a positive way, because they're the one who increased the sales tax to ten point two twenty-five percent, because it was nine point something. So, uh, so thanks to them that we have to say thank you, thank you to the, to the people of Hawthorne.
Yeah, that's correct. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, looks like that's pretty much it. Well, thank you very much, Felice, uh, for bringing Mister, uh, Terry Shi, Shi. And who else? Who else is part of your team, sir? You, you're here on your own, right?
Uh, Gardena Durant.
Okay, Miss, uh, Mister Rand. Uh, thank you so much, ma'am.
And we, we wanna thank Felice for all her hard work and, and the rest of the staff for helping us and preparing and- And we, we wanna thank Felice for all her hard work and, and the rest of the staff for helping us and preparing and, and being very transparent, so.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second to accept uh, the report?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Mister City Clerk? I have made the motion.
Okay, do you mind if I read it again?
Yeah, of course, go ahead.
Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council receive and file. The annual conference and financial report of the City of Hawthorne for the fiscal year ended, ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. So roll call, Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rayce English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Uh, thank you once more, guys.
Thank you, bye bye.
Bye bye. Mister Clerk, uh, can you please read item eighteen into the record and. Uh, then City Manager Vaughn Norris, uh, will introduce the homeless services coordinator, uh, for the City of Hawthorne, which we're very proud of.
Uh, City of Hawthorne Quarterly Homeless Service Update.
Good evening again, um, it's my pleasure to introduce, uh, Dulce Medina. City of Hawthorne's homeless service coordinator. She's done a great job since being on staff here. Um, and at this time, she's gonna proceed with a presentation to give an update to council regarding some of the traction we made in the city.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Good evening, council members, good evening, Mayor Vargas, Mayor Protem. I think Eric is gonna be providing a, a slide.
Is that map out in the back that we see right behind you? Is that a map of the service areas, right behind you?
Yes, it's a map of all the seventeen uh, tracks here in the City of Hawthorne.
Awesome, thank you.
Are we talking about the M S four stormwater? Cause that's the only presentation I have. I don't have any other presentation.
I don't think they're stormwater related, right?
Yeah.
Can you make something out of that?
I can share it, give me one second, I'll bring it up right now.
Thank you so much, Vaughn. Pleasure seeing all of you again.
Empty you, Duff.
Thank you.
You did a great job on the homeless count.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Doctor.
So your update will include uh, some of the numbers refer back to the homeless count?
Uh, some very uh, tentative numbers because the, the L A S A still has not provided us the final count yet.
If you need to come back and just give us a formal rundown as to what happened. I'd like to know what data was taken and how much information you were able to get other than just counting.
Oh, yes, um, we, I will, I will definitely provide some of the volunteers that participated, um, and um. We actually did a wonderful job with all the seventeen tracks. All of them were completed and um, I will toot our horn. Because not all the South Bay cities completed their tracks. And Hawthorne was definitely one that completed all the seventeen tracks that night. Thanks, light.
Okay, sorry about that. Next slide? Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, let me know when you're ready.
Yep, we can see it.
Next slide, please, thank you. So I'll give you a, a brief presentation uh, for the annual report for twenty twenty one. I'll give you an update regarding the emergency housing voucher, which is moving quite fast, very busy, a lot of success stories. Um, that I'm gonna be sharing with you. Uh, and I'll be. A quick review over the innovation grant with La Cada, uh, and the Hawthorne P D, which is also uh, been implemented. And, and we are full speed ahead with that. And then finally, I'll do the homeless count. Next slide, please. So for the annual report, uh, you can see that, uh, this slide, hopefully you could all see it somewhat good. I know the bars are quite small. But you'll see three bars representing the, the clients that we provide services to, the services. And the shelters and interim housing provided to our clients. This graph reports services provided to Hawthorne residence only. Um, the services represents all the services provided, which uh, were a variety of uh, social services. Arranging transportation for medical services, housing appointments, behavioral health services, outreach efforts. Getting them document ready for their housing vouchers or just any other program that requires document assistance with. Uh, we had a total of uh, two hundred and twenty five underlocated uh, participants for the homeless program for twenty twenty one. Uh, very active uh, participants, very compliant, and those that were not compliant were exited from the program and referred out. Depending on the, on the needs of each client. Uh, you, you're also gonna see in orange, um, which I wish it was a lot more, but uh, it, it is a process. Trying to shelter uh, these clients, these participants, because all of them have various needs, different needs. From behavioral health, mental health, medical needs and so forth. But we were able successfully to house a hundred um. Hawthorne residents experiencing homelessness for that entire year via through shelter, through interim housing. And this number uh, only reflects temporary housing. This does not represent uh, permanent housing. But we had a tremendous success in at least providing uh, one hundred of those clients with temporary shelters and interim housing. Next slide. And so for our emergency housing voucher that came to life uh, back in June, July of twenty twenty one throughout the county. Uh, our homeless service uh, program has been working with three different housing authorities. And our office alone submitted seventy seven housing assessments for our participants in our program. And out of those seventy seven participants, which were Hawthorne residents experiencing homelessness. Twenty nine of them were matched to the Hawthorne Housing Department of Housing, which we're quite proud of that. Uh, HACLA uh, matched five of them, which that's the Housing Authority for the City of L A. And twenty three of our clients of our participants were matched to the L A County Department of Housing. And those pictures that you see on screen represent some of the process that all participants have to go through. Uh, every housing authority has uh, different applications. Uh, they range between twenty one to forty eight pages long per applicant. Um, and um, after that process, after that application is processed, background checks are done on every participant. They're called for individual or uh, group settings to provide them their voucher issuances or voucher briefings. They have to sign documents and the end result at, that picture you see on screen is uh, uh, participants signing a lease. And getting their keys at the end of the, the process, which we're quite proud of. Next slide. And this slide represents some of our success stories. We've had five permanently housed Hawthorne residents. Two of them on the left uh, were placed outside, even though they were Hawthorne residents, they were matched to an L A County Department of Housing uh, voucher. And they, their house, um, I had to uh, be present at their lease signing, they got their keys, they were walking in. And the three on your left uh, were housed within the City of Hawthorne. Uh, wanna do a shout out to uh, Kimberly Mack's uh, team, they're doing an outstanding job. The communication between her team and, and uh, my office here, uh, is moving quite fast, um. I, I love it, uh, we're, we're a good team. And this is a result of the communication and team efforts between those two departments. Next slide. And uh, at the last uh, council presentation, we were uh, I, I think I mentioned the La Cada Grant. Uh, Innovation Grant funded by the South Bay C O G for three hundred and forty eight thousand. It's been fully implemented now, started in January. We did start somewhat late because La Cada was in the process of hiring the full time. Outreach coordinators, they've joined the team already. Uh, we have two full time coordinators, Manny Mora and Chris Lewis, which I will be presenting hopefully at, at the next presentation. Um, two full time outreach coordinators providing outreach in the City of Hawthorne Monday, Wednesday and Fridays. Tuesdays and Thursdays, they are reviewing cases with me, following up on um, some of the behavioral health. Uh, referrals that we're doing for detox and um, um, rehab services. And La Cada is the Los Angeles Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse and they, this grant, um, the, the beauty of this. Is that this grant is uh, saving for behavioral beds for Hawthorne residents only. And we are definitely in the process of uh, following up with, we've already placed two candidates. In Behavioral Health Services at two of their facilities. One is going through detox and rehab and the other one was actually just admitted on Friday. So uh, we're already seeing some of the, the fruits of, of this grant and the partnership. That's not only between the La Cada Agency and my office, but uh, Hawthorne P D, Hawthorne P D. Uh, Lieutenant Port's team have uh, been doing a wonderful job of partnering up with the La Cada Outreach Team. Uh, myself, whenever we do uh, cleanups of certain areas, uh, reaching out whenever they find a client for documentation signing. So this grant is definitely something that uh, has been a blessing to the city. Uh, because a lot of the clients are being found. And if you see the target metrics at the bottom of that slide. The grant is only requiring us, it is a, you know, a, a, a pilot grant ba- basically, just for a year. Um, they want us to uh, have fifty clients on our caseload. We've already surpassed that uh, goal. We have a total of eighty four currently between uh, the two outreach coordinators and myself. Uh, thirty clients uh, have to be added into the L A S A case management system. And I believe we have, I think, eleven already, um, in, in the system. Twelve clients have to be permanently housed and um, we've housed one already through the grant. Uh, which you saw on the previous slide. And only one of them is gonna be counted for this grant because that particular participant. Went through the detox and rehab process. Next slide. And the homeless count uh, took place February twenty thirty, was rescheduled from January. Was a successful night. Uh, thank you, Doctor Jimenez, for coming out and um, participating. Once again, uh, Lieutenant Port's team from Hawthorne P D did an outstanding job. Um, I gave them all the priority uh, census tracts. They know they're the experts, they know, uh, we can, you know, we couldn't take some of the volunteers on the freeway pass and underpass. They took all of those census tracts. Uh, once again, Hawthorne was one of the South Bay uh, cities or spot areas. That completed their census tracts. Not all the cities were able to complete their census tracts. And some cities had uh, lesser tracts than, than the City of Hawthorne. So I was quite uh, proud of all the volunteers. We had about thirty eight to forty volunteers that signed up, thirty six showed up. Uh, once again, Hawthorne P D took all the priority tracts. We had five officers that took about two to three different teams throughout the night. Uh, all of it was done in car setting. It was a very whole night. The numbers that I was anticipating uh, were gonna be lower due to a lot of clients being placed on shelter. Uh, interim housing or themselves seeking shelter because of the, the weather conditions that night. Um, the data, it was a different approach to the homeless count this year because L A S A. Wanted us to capture all the data via uh, an Akito uh, app on the phone through our smartphones and tablet. I was quite impressed once again with all the volunteers. They did their homework before showing up, um. They downloaded the app, uh, registered on their own. We had set various different sections in uh, the Venus Room at the Memorial Center. In case some volunteers didn't come prepared. I did not have one unprepared volunteer. Uh, the Hawthorne P D was also on board. Uh, it was a smooth process, I was quite impressed. Uh, the L A S A final numbers have not come in, but from my count, it was a total of approximately of a hundred and fifty. Um, those numbers, the final numbers from L A S A are gonna be provided to us by June, July. Uh, Per L A S A, uh, and Nancy at the C O G. Now, the Hawthorne media also came out. Did some ride alongs with uh, the Hawthorne P D teams and captured a couple of the footage uh, within the, the center while they were registering. And receiving their diploma at the end and uh, picking up the supplies. So, um, yeah, that's it. Next slide, I think that's uh, that's my contact information in case any of you have any questions. Short presentation, very, very short presentation this time.
Thank you, Dulce. Uh, Councilwoman Valentine and then Councilwoman English?
Yes, thank you. Dulce, thank you for that lovely report. That was very comprehensive. I do have a few questions, cause I'd like to drill down on the numbers.
Okay.
So you have, you had two hundred and twenty five clients that you, that you counted. And um, twenty four hundred and twenty five services provided, correct? Okay. You housed a hundred residents te- on a temporary basis and five permanently.
Correct.
Okay, so the one hundred that you housed, okay, so, so that means that. With the exception of those one hundred and five, the other clients did not receive housing. So they received other kinds of services, is that what happened?
Yes, they are either in the process of getting document ready. Uh, clients that are permanently housed have to be one hundred percent document ready, meaning. Uh, for interim housing facilities and permanent housing. They are requiring clients to come in with a negative COVID test, uh, birth certificates, uh. California I D or driver's license, uh, social security cards. Uh, any type of income that they're getting, uh, whether it be G R, whether it be CalFresh, CalWorks. All verification of benefits needs to be presented to these programs. So some of the clients that have not been housed, uh, not that they won't be, but they're in the process of the office here getting them document ready. So it takes a process for them to come in, uh, complete paperwork to submit to the Social Security Office. Uh, retrieve their birth certificates, retrieve, uh, go to the D N V. We do provide D N V vouchers to Saint Margaret, but it's. It, it's a process, basically. We are continuing to work with them to get them document ready for housing.
Of the clients that were not housed, how many of those are on drugs or um, are uh, on rehab?
It's uh, that, that's a difficult uh, question, um, to, to, out of, from, from two twenty five. Those clients, because not, a lot of them don't wanna disclose that or not, are not even willing to do an assessment. So I think we're gonna see an improvement now that L A Cada team is on board, because they're actually, uh, we didn't have that option. In twenty twenty one, I was unable to tell a person that I know was on drug, drugs or using, um. I was unable to provide them an actual bed at that particular point in time. Now we're seeing a difference, because if we run into the La Cada team or myself, or Hawthorne P D runs into a client. Out in the field that is requiring um. To, to go into detox or rehab and they're willing to do it and they sign off, yes, I'm ready for it, they take. We have the transportation van that takes them right to the bed automatically. So I think we're gonna see a difference for twenty twenty two. Because now we're be- being able to transport them directly to some of the La Cada centers. And the La Cada Agency is holding four to five beds for us on a monthly basis.
So I guess my frustration is that, um. We, we have, we, we, we cannot necessarily know. I mean, if, if we've, we've only provided, we've provided a hundred residents with temporary housing and five permanently. Many of the ones we have not provided are probably, their problem is drugs or. Um, you know, probably the reason for their homelessness is not because they can't find housing. So I'm, I'm, I'm frustrated because I'm, I'm just wondering. Are they still on the street, the ones that you haven't been able to do, to house?
No, we, for this temporary housing, some are, uh, you know, I can't, um.
I don't mean the one hundred that you've temporarily housed.
No, the others.
I mean, the rest of them, of the tw- two hundred and twenty five, are they still on the street?
Some are, and some are in the process, actually, some are in shelters, some are in interim housing. But when I say interim housing, it all depends on the bed availability. So sometimes we need to ship them from one shelter to another. Um, in a week, a participant can have three different shelters depending on where we find availability. So if someone comes in with a more traumatic experience, that shelter will actually vacate some of the others that are not. Uh, in need of those services to bring in someone that uh, is going through human trafficking or domestic violence. So we are constantly shifting our clients from shelter to shelter, uh, unless they're in interim housing. So some are still on the street, yes, some, you know, you, I can't lie, you see it uh, in the city. But we're doing an aggressive approach with. But we're doing an aggressive approach with not just the LA Cotta team, but the Hawthorne PD team uh and myself to try and get those clients that are still um in the street, on the street and know that are going through substance use to take a bet. So we're not gonna be uh, we're not gonna have a su- success story with those particular people the first time. It takes two to three times, sometimes more, to convince them and actually create a report with uh the counselors that are going out there to get them into a bed.
Okay, and so once you get them into a bed though, you're saying you still may take them to another temporary shelter?
No, for the La Cotta team, once they're going to detox, detox uh depending, every case is different. So when someone goes into detox, it's between ten to fifteen days. And then after that, the rehab program is thirty to ninety days. During that time, I have sufficient amount of time to start their housing voucher. Uh before, I wasn't able to do that because they're, you know, we're trying to find them, we're trying to locate them. Now with the La Cotta team and having that bed set aside for just Hawthorne residents, I know where to contact and find that client and retrieve signatures from them. So I I am a very optimistic about this grant uh because I'm already seeing uh delivery of services and delivery in the document uh readiness for these clients. I'm, I know where they're at now.
Thank you very much, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman English and then Councilwoman Montero.
Thank you for the report and for reporting out. Um I I was curious on your homeless count. Um I I think we did it the same time. I did one in Los Angeles. Um is there a number that your homeless count um can can report out? How many homeless did we have in Hawthorne?
Approximately that night, my account personally was about a hundred and fifty. But LSA has not submitted the final numbers. Everything was captured live and it was captured through the dashboard. But unfortunately, it was the first time that LSA implemented this. So a lot of the cities reported that the dashboard kept breaking down. It wasn't, you know, uh uh we weren't able to actually retrieve the data live. Uh but all the, all the data was reported live via the Akito app uh through all the volunteer sheet usage. So my personal count as the volunteers were coming in and I was taking notes, approximately a hundred and fifty. Um but we're gonna get the final numbers per LSA by June, July.
Um so, yeah, it it was different this year. We just drove in a car and just kind of physically counted from the security and and you know, safety of our car due to COVID and other things. Um so you physically sometimes didn't see them. Um it was just, you know, a tent, but you were not gonna go into the tent and count how many are in there. So obviously, there's still maybe iffy as to exactly how much because from the numbers of prior years, it sounds like we've increased from from what I'm gathering.
Yes, and I will um, I could definitely attest to that, especially because a lot of um the new homeless clients that I've been seeing throughout the city of Hawthorne are reporting coming from uh neighbor cities. Um I I've reported to uh Vaughn and Brenda that, yes, um a lot of clients are reporting that are coming from Inglewood, the Gardena area and the Lenox area. So uh a lot of them are being um uh, I don't wanna say pushed out, but they're finding their way over to our, to their neighbor cities.
It's a trickling effect. Obviously, it's, you know, started in downtown LA. Um and then it's trickling into other cities. Um I I also wanted to hear more about the new uh LA's, LA Cotta. Can can we um Vaughn, can we bring them in for a presentation? I'd like to hear more about them. This is new. Uh it's great to know that there's another provider. And um how are we doing with one particular? I I I remember him because my 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 daughters went to school with him at Losinger. And he's um at Hawthorne Memorial Park. Um so I'm, I know you know who he is. He's he's always there. I'm just curious. Um obviously, you can't push him into a service, right, or program? It's just a matter of continuously doing the outreach and 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 hopefully they will ultimately want to be helped.
I I think I know who you're referring to. Uh we are um, two assessments have been completed and we are getting a counselor out uh in two weeks to actually do um a a couple more assessments with him. And uh we're getting a little bit of a responsiveness from him. Um so I'm uh, I I look forward to having the counselor out here. Uh we are starting to get him document ready. Uh he definitely has no paperwork whatsoever uh at all, no birth certificate or anything. So we're starting from scratch with him. Uh unfortunately, we haven't been able to get a feedback or cooperation from family members. Uh but uh I'm proud to say that we have some councilm- counselors coming out ne- in the next two weeks and continuing assessments with him. So um hopefully I'll have positive um news for you the next time.
And one last question. Out of the hundred and fifty people that you counted, were there any that are uh unhoused that are sleeping on someone's couch?
No.
Okay.
No, not for that night.
You don't get calls from folks saying, I have someone that I I'm helping, he's, they're sleeping on my couch for now, but they're homeless?
Well, the hundred, the hundred and fifty that I counted personally, that was for the homeless count. So we do get a lot of calls saying, yes, I'm couching with someone, um I'm staying with a friend or a relative. And we have various programs for that because that's preventative homeless services. So we definitely encourage them to uh enroll themselves in a pre- in a preventive uh homeless service program with us. And we don't count them as being homeless because we are working with them on a path to avoid being homeless. So there's various programs um for for them as well.
That's interesting because LSA refers to folks sleeping on the couch as homeless.
Well, we're 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 taking a more aggressive approach um with that uh because of the services that both PATH, Harbor Interface, St. Margaret Center, yes, they are considered homeless. But we need to prioritize, especially with this these housing vouchers, emergency housing vouchers. If you are outdoors, that is my priority, that is our priority as as a as the city, you know. Uh we wanna make sure that we get them off the street, whether it be via shelter, interim housing or the through the emergency housing uh voucher program. If you're staying with someone, then uh we set you in a different priority level.
What about the folks that are living in a car parked off on a, at a street or into the shopping centers?
Those are definitely priority too. And uh some of the um permanently housed, two of them were actually living in the car right behind our senior center for years.
Okay.
Two of the women, yes.
Thank you for your report.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Montero.
Uh thank you, Ms. May. Um thank you, uh Ms. Medina. Um very thorough report and it seems like you've been very busy out there.
Somewhat, yes.
Yeah, because by by ca- by having, you know, two hundred and twenty-five clients, unduplicated clients, that that's a big number. So so my hat goes off to you because I say, I know homeless is a challenge issue that uh, you know, they have a diverse things that you have to do and you have explained pretty good. So it's not just, it's not just a substantive use. Um the fact that these people are on the street, sometimes because they're unhoused, that is why they turn into alcohol or drugs, right? Uh because sometimes that is not the first thing. The first thing sometimes is because they couldn't pay the rent. Uh because because uh uh rent is is so, it's outrageous. But I'm I'm so happy to see that uh you and your team has been doing a fantastic job. Uh because like I said, in the past, we didn't have these numbers. And now because of your work and and your and your colleagues, you know, we having this number. And 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 this also speaks the fact that uh, you know, temporary uh housing was one hundred individual and and that means Valentine was trying to to reach out that about a hundred and twenty-five people still unhoused per se, yes? So and that is why that we in the city of Hawthorne, you know, we need to come up with some type of 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 program as like as a, as a bridge house that can temporary house these other people, especially the ones that you not be able to put them in shelter, right? Because like you said, they have to go from sometime from three different places, right?
Right, right.
And and can you tell us, for example, sometime where these shelters are?
Oh, well, um that tha- that's another um barrier that we face here for Hawthorne residents. These residents have lived in Hawthorne or around the city for several years, decades even, uh our senior population. And we only have one shelter within a Spa Eight without the entire uh South Bay Spa, and that's in Long Beach. And most of the time, I can, I can tell you without a doubt that ninety-nine percent of the time, there's no bed available
Yeah.
in that particular uh shelter. Why? Not because of their fault, but because it's the only shelter within Spa Eight. Our Northern Hub does not have uh a shelter nowhere near. So sometimes I'm having to relocate our Hawthorne residents that are very um unhappy to be transported to downtown LA in Spa Four, which have uh maybe about uh three to four different shelters or South Central, which has more um. Some of them refuse to go to Lancaster, Spa One, Montebello, Spa Three, that, you know, it's just, we're having to relocate these clients, these participants. And that's why they don't stay at these shelters because the minute, they could only stay one to two days, but then they have a medical appointment or they need to come back to us to continue the case management. And uh that's the barrier we're facing. So we've had plenty of talks with the COG about hopefully developing uh some shelter space in a different area of Spa Eight or maybe here in our Northern Hub, which is drastically needed.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, so thank you for that explanation because that is what, you know, uh my colleagues and I and some other people, that does not understand. Uh because we don't have no shelter around here. Like you said, the 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 nearest one, we're used to Long Beach and most of the time is full because what, uh Spa Eight, how many cities in Spa Eight?
In Spa Eight, there's uh eight, eight, yeah, Gardena, Lenox, Inglewood, Hawthorne, Redondo, Manhattan, yes, there's several.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a big area because, you know, so so in the end, we we don't have the space to accommodate everyone. Uh but I have to, I have to commend you again because the La Cotta, you know, uh like I said, it was like almost like a pilot project and and it seems like it's working pretty good.
It is, it is. I am uh, I'm happy to to go out there with them and uh they're giving me some breathing space to actually get the clients uh document ready and attend some of these housing appointments with them while they're providing outreach and doing assessments with clients out in the field.
Yeah, because because that that's the most important thing is to keep tracking of those clients. Because, you know, if it was not La Cotta, you know, they could just disappear and then you would have, and then next time you had to start all over again.
Correct.
Yeah, so so that's ve- that's very good. But but like like again, I have to tell you, um thank you for that uh homeless count because like you said, it was very cold, uh even, you know, I was suffering, you know, with the with the allergies and and sinus. Uh but uh a hundred and fifty, and and when you look at that number and then versus your clients that unduplicated two hundred and twenty-five, so how do you compare the did that, do we missing those seventy-five other people somewhere?
Well, um it it was cold, the weather definitely had something to do with it uh that night. And I've uh also provided some feedback for LSA. I I really think that moving forward, the homeless count uh should be considered to be done um not during winter or or summer. It probably should be done during the spring, not not, or the fall, you know, but um uh because, and during the day. Every, LSA for some reason continues to think that during the nighttime, we're gonna capture more because everyone is 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 settling down. But I think LSA is not just hearing it from me, but from other case managers and housing navigators that a lot, we're we're doing a a pretty good work out here to where we're actually placing them in shelters. We're not gonna find them during the nighttime. And uh we we wanna be able to find them during during the day because that's when they're seeking services.
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully, LSA considers that uh approach for then, you know, for the for the following year.
Yeah, yeah. And again, you know, I I have to say thank you, thank you for those five permanent housing because one of those ladies looks familiar to me, so.
Yes, uh uh you know, one of them stayed right off of the 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 bridge, off El Cumbre, yeah, so with with her kids. So I'm happy uh that she's been housed.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much again. And you know, like I said, you know, my my head goes off to you because it's a challenge situation. And and it seems like you're doing pretty good uh with your team and continue to do an outstanding work. Uh and anything that we can do, like I said, you know, even in Hawthorne, you know, we have to come up with that bridge housing, the temporary to make sure that we have somebody for ninety days that move them into uh permanent housing.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. May.
Sure.
I have, I have.
All right, all right, let's uh, let's try to get through it.
Yes, I have, I have one more question.
Yeah.
Yes, um so Dulce, would you say that if you had housing for all of the homeless that you have counted, that they would take advantage of it or do most of these people need other kinds of services?
I can't, I can't uh say that all of them will, but a high percentage will definitely uh take us up on that offer. Uh I'm seeing it already with LA Cotta on board uh because now we're being able to distinguish some of the people that are actually just became ho- uh homeless due to the pandemic. Uh and like Councilmember Montero said, or um the ones that we're identifying, those that actually need detox and rehab. And those are gonna be the the ones that are gonna take a bit longer because they need a lot more assessment.
So so this is really not a housing problem per se, is it? In terms of the main problem, these people are on the street. Is 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 isn't, am I not correct about that?
I think it's a, it's a combination of lack of housing um and the results of the pandemic and results of uh substance use. So it's it's a combination. Uh but I don't wanna say that one takes over the other. What I can tell you is that from the data that's coming in already, at least for these first three months that we're providing outreach, um I don't see a lot of them um being classified as uh substance users. They are, uh they cannot afford a housing. They're not working part, they're either working part-time or they're um unable to pay rent and so they've lost their homes. Uh that's what we're seeing. That's the data that's coming in, at least for this year.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh I'm I move to accept the report.
Second.
Second.
Okay, the I I moved, I made the motion and Councilwoman Reyes English made the second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Thank you, Dulce, a great report.
Great job.
Appreciate it. I have some questions, but I guess uh for the sake of time, I'll ask them at another time, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um city manager's consent calendar, uh item nine, which is item nineteen as a whole. Mr. City Manager, the agenda reflects, they have about seven items, number twenty through twenty-six. I I think that makes it seven. So these are your consent calendars, so please proceed by introducing each of these items, please.
Absolutely. Item twenty, award of contract for local street improvement project, project number two-two dash zero four. Item twenty-one, award of contract for park maintenance services, project number two-two dash zero zero one. Item twenty-two, construction of speed humps on one-eighteenth Street between Inglewood Avenue and Sundell Avenue. Item twenty-three, First Amendment to the consultant agreement for the investigation and technical support service for the sewer rehabilitation program. First Amendment between the city of Hawthorne, city and Terra Tech consultant. Item twenty-four, guidelines to facilitate a return, a planned return to in-person counsel and commission board meetings. Item twenty-five, memorandum of understanding between community partners and the city of Hawthorne. Lastly, item twenty-six, progress payment number ten and the final acceptance in the amount of eight hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-two point seventy-two cents to Solicitor Contractors Corporation, DBA, Chonery of Downey, California for project number twenty dash one-two, Curry Avenue Improvement Project Phase Two. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager consent calendar, calendar. May I have a more motion to approve items twenty through twenty-six?
Yes, you may. I move.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Uh the the motion is gonna go to Councilmember Montero.
Thank you.
Uh Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Patterson? Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and Councilmembers voting yes.
Thank you, Mister City Clerk. Uh, Mister City Attorney, you have a consent calendar that uh we would like for you to present.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I have one item on the City Attorney Consent Calendar. It's a proposed settlement of a lawsuit brought by Kidri Lyra, and the settlement amount is uh in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
I move.
I'd like to uh comment on that, if I may.
Yeah, the motion's gonna go to Councilwoman uh Valentine. Go ahead, Councilwoman. My comment?
Yes, I I'd like to thank the City Attorney's Office for this excellent, its excellent judgment in the decision to file a motion for summary judgment. The granting of the motion saved the city the cost of defending the lawsuit as well as the potentially adverse judgment. Excellent, excellent work by the City Attorney's Office on this matter and all other matters. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Um, I don't think we had a motion, did we?
Yeah.
Just a roll call.
Okay, just go ahead on the roll call, I mean, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Councilmember Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The vote reflects Mayor and Councilmembers voting yes.
City Council Discussion Action Items, uh, hero pay for all employees. Mayor Pro Tem Patterson, please proceed.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, pretty simple, um, City of Carson, uh, they they outlined how they're going to uh spend a lot of their art money, uh, and kind of identified a lot of areas in which to spend it all at once. One of it was uh six million dollars they donated towards hero pay for all employees, so yeah, all employees are gonna get about twelve thousand dollars. Um, and I thought it was great, um, something great to do for the employees, something I I think that we should do something similar. I want to suggest that we take a thousand dollars from the art money to pay out to all the employees, not thousand dollars, excuse me, a million dollars total to pay out to all employees, which I think it'll come out to, I don't know how many employees we have, one to two thousand dollars per employee. Um, and uh, you know, designated as hero pay. I think some people might have already gotten some hero pay, so maybe that will be deducted from this payout, but everybody's kind of gotten um impacted by the pandemic over these last couple of years. Um, whether it be you've gotten sick, um, you know, challenges with telecommuting, dealing with sick friends and family members that have to take care of, childcare ops and all that stuff, and I think it'd be a great way to to kind of uh reward, um, you know, the hard work for employees.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, so, um, could we use ARPA money?
That's specifically what I was suggesting, and the uh, the reimbursable, not the reimbursable, the one that um, not the monies that we moved over to general fund, but the, that other monies, however we wanna classify it. But um, use a million of that art money to pay out to all the employees for kind of a additional uh hero pay.
Are you floating the idea, or you're asking for comment?
I would like to, um, I mean, I'm open for a different number, but that's what I would like to suggest and ask for the Council's uh concurrence on. How many employees do we have total, Mister City Manager?
Uh, full-time estimate about two hundred and sixty employees, including uh the Police Department.
And so with part, with part-time employees, how many would you say we have?
Tough question, because we have seasonal, but part-time, year-round, maybe another fifty employees.
So save three hundred employees. If it's a million dollars.
Right, by how much?
Uh, let's say three hundred employees, just rounded about, um.
I think we're gonna have to adjust that number. If we would be, be, well, we just have to find an appropriate amount and extrapolate maybe.
So if it's uh, if we, if we designate a million dollars to all employees, let's say it's three hundred employees, everybody get about three, about three thousand dollars. Um, roughly, right? I mean, we we can have them part-time employees maybe get less than the full-time employees. But um, it comes to be roughly about three thousand dollars per employee.
Have, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, have any cities other than Carson done this?
For, and I don't know off the top of my head which ones, but I understand Carson was the third city to do it.
Okay, and it's an allowable thing, right? Obviously, if they're doing it, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. They designated, you know, monies to a number of different line items and um six million for employees.
I think it's a great idea. Um, would the City Manager, would you be okay if the City Manager takes a look and talks to maybe whoever our uh ARPA team is and see if there wasn't uh any other expenses we were already designating this for? I'd be open to talking about it more. I mean, what would you suggest, Mayor Pro Tem? What would you like to see?
Um, I mean, I would like to, um, I don't know if you wanna take, I I'm really open, I'm not tied to anything though, but I think it's something that'd be great that we do um, as a city, um, you know, I'd get everybody's opinion about it, and it's um, you know, everybody thinks it's a good idea. And task the City Manager with, can I identify exactly who, you know, you know, who's gonna get it?
Councilmember Valentine?
Uh, yes, I would like to, um, in concept, I I like the idea. I would like to see what other cities have implemented it. Um, can you, can you check perhaps, um, Mister City Manager with the other cities in the um South Bay Council of Governments and see if any of them have implemented this?
Absolutely, I'll follow up with that.
Sure enough, for us, Carson, they did, uh, just to give you more details, uh, they identified it as premium pay on their their council agenda, but six million dollars to premium pay, four million dollars to street improvements, two million dollars to Tyler Muniz, so they allocate to a number of different things, small business grants, small business relief, blah, 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 all that stuff. Um, and so I know we, we're kind of as we go with how we plan on distributing funds, but I know that we've got about fifteen point something million, we moved thirteen million in general fund. I think we have at least a million dollars in non-general fund art money. And so, so that that's my suggestion.
I wanted to make the suggestion of, of the city ma- suggestion. If the City Manager can determine an amount that seems fair, comparable to what other cities are doing, then maybe extrapolate back, uh, the others, extrapolate backwards to see what the total amount would be.
Absolutely. Whatever request is, uh, let staff study this uh matter and bring back the next council meeting. A few different options that are allowable, the reimbursement of that ARPA money.
That's good. Thank you, thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, that sounds like a good idea. And uh, we'll see, we'll see what we can do for the re- uh, for the, for the employees.
Sounds good. Also, um, I don't even know if it's appropriate to say it here, but um did I miss it somewhere in the agenda? We talked about the um the nonprofit. Is it, did I miss that?
No, it was approved, twenty, item twenty-five.
Got it, missed it. But since we're talking about ARPA, ARPA money anyway, I'll say this. Can we um identify some money to go to the homeowners' associations as well? Um, when we're looking at that money that's going to nonprofits? Maybe include the homeowners associations, you know, in that list of nonprofits that that are being considered.
That definitely would empower them to do what they need to do, um, in a probably a stronger, stronger manner, right?
You have to be careful on that, Mister Mayor, because there is definition of nonprofits is a different definition, right? They have five oh one C three, five oh one C four, five oh one C C eight, uh, the churches, so you have a thing, have to be careful how uh who's going to be identified as a nonprofit business that provide direct service to to the people of Hawthorne.
Absolutely, it has to be studied.
Have to be very careful.
No, no, and 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 I could, not that, I'm not hesitating, I
Oh, no, I'm not saying hesitate, yeah.
I think uh, I think it does have to be studied, because then that's a problem for everybody.
Yeah.
We, we that would have given, they for having received, and everybody, you know, it's, if it's not an appropriate transfer of money, then, you know.
But City Manager, could you kind of consider the homeowners associations as well in that item? I know you're gonna come back with some recommendations of how to allocate those funds amongst the nonprofit and see if it's appropriate to include the homeowners associations in that group, and if it's not, we can, you know, discuss it.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Understood. Thank you.
That's it. Both are good suggestions, Mayor Pro Tem, thank you. Councilwoman Valentine, increase in payment of fees to referees at the Sports Center.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, um, I had a request for a referee, um, at, from a referee at the Sports Center to increase the pay. Um, he's been a referee for many years and feels as though Hawthorne is not competitive with other cities. So I feel it's important that when we consider how much to pay referees, we remain competitive with other cities, so that we always retain the best quality referees. Um, at present, we pay twenty-three dollars per, per game. And it is my understanding that Inglewood and Lawndale pay their referees thirty-five dollars per game. So I'm going to suggest that the City Manager, I'm going to direct that the City Manager take a look at our budget and see um if we can increase the referee pay, in con- consistent with what we're able to afford. Also looking at whether or not we are competitive with other cities. So I'm making that directly.
Noted.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I concur.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Valentine for making that suggestion. And uh, for what, for what, for what us, it could be a small uh action, it would be a big impact and benefit to them, to make things correct, right? Okay, and my item, which is item thirty-two, the reopening of City Hall um, for both City Hall services and for City Council meetings. And uh, and I do give credit to my Councilmember colleagues, who have talked about this before. But I really think it's time, guys, I mean, L A U S D has uh they're gonna be removing, removing the mask requirements inside, starting, I think, uh, Wednesday of next week, or maybe tomorrow or next week. One of these Wednesdays. Um, vaccination cards allow people to go into food establishments easily. But some local establishments have the right to request for people to wear masks, so nobody's stopping them. But we're kind of beyond that. And the, the turning point, I have to say it, and it's so interesting and ironic. Those same people that came down on us and told us we had to wear masks and that there was a problem and this is and that. During the Super Bowl, those two people, two people in particular, the governor and the mayor of Los Angeles, Eric Garcetti, got caught taking, uh, having taken pictures. And uh, uh, they were talking with celebrities without their masks. And pictures and images of all those people in the super, in in the Super Bowl on T V for display. And all of a sudden, because these, you know, these people got called out for that, you got this lady Barbara Ferrera from the L A County Health Department, all of a sudden, all the different requirements started dropping off, all the rules just started dropping away, dropping away, dropping away. Okay, it took, it took for our governor to get caught, and the L A's mayor to be caught in a hypocritical moment, and uh, all these things started changing. Okay, well, the reality is, that aside, is that we're at a point where it's becoming commonplace for people uh to start getting together with certain types of requirements, making sure people are vaccinated, making sure people are, you know, just doing what you should always have been doing, which is if you go to the bathroom, you wash your hands. Okay, whether you, you know, you, you know, you just, simple cleanliness and hygiene. Um, when you sneeze, don't sneeze in somebody's face. Make sure you cover yourself, so your, whatever you have is not going to uh traverse the air and towards somebody else. It's just commonplace, just, so I think we're be- at a point where we're ready, we're just ready to open Si- City Hall.
As we have.
What, one of the things that uh kind of inspired me to do this is that I got telephone, I've been receiving two or three teleph- uh, three telephone calls from residents saying that they're trying to coordinate coming here into City Hall. They get answering machines, they get, uh, you know, they don't get their emails returned, is because we have our employees that are helping people at the counter who do have appointments, they can't answer the phones real time and doing, so I think it's time that we facilitate all this stuff and have reasonable precautions and not exaggerated precautions. If we're gonna have a City Council meeting, all of us are vaccinated on the council. We can sit next to each other. We don't have to wear like a frickin', uh, uh, clean room garb and stuff. Let's just be reasonable about this. I would like to task the City Manager and whatever team to just come up with some reasonable measures, nothing exaggerated, look at what other cities are doing. I don't wanna, I don't wanna look like clowns up there pretending, you know, that that there's a situation when there's not, but we just need to take reasonable precautions. Mayor Pro Tem, what do you gotta say?
Would you, so what other cities are doing uh in-person council meetings? Um, or is that, is that a norm at the moment? Are we behind the?
No, no, from research, uh, council or have uh projected to have in-person meetings started in May. That's kind of the, the tone right now. There's some councils that are mainly hybrid, meaning council members are in the, the chamber, staff or community members or via Zoom, so there's a combination, but I have not um found a city that's fully open having meetings as normal.
I know, I know the city of Carson, you know, of course I bring up Carson, I worked there, um, that we're still telecommuting um at work, at people, we get tested every week, we're required to get tested every week. And um, two or three people are tested positive for COVID every week. So, I mean, I know for a fact that the pandemic isn't over, um, based upon, you know, just my experience at work. Um, and so I would wanna make sure that we continue to, to protect our employees. Um, I, I know we all agree that we're short-staffed in a lot of departments, and I I can't imagine what would happen if um, that got even worse, if a few people, a few more people got COVID, uh, wasn't able to come to work or operate. So I would definitely not want to be the first to to do these things and then take any chances, especially in terms of the health of our employees and our ability to provide services to the community. And then same with the council meetings, I'm not necessarily looking to be the first in this respect. Uh, I would like to ask for, um, you know, uh, some information about what other cities are doing and what their plans are, and uh be kind of consistent with you know, what's happening in the region. I don't think there's any reason for us to uh, be aggressive in this respect in in dealing with a pandemic that still exists, uh, you know, this is my opinion, the reason why it's not the uh, the way, the reason why things are opening up the way they are, because it's a economic reasons, not health reasons. Um, and I don't think we need to necessarily put economics first, uh, we definitely need to put health first. Um, so we can kind of, so I would like to ask to, to um understand really what everybody else is doing in the region and, and put the other plan as consistent, uh, consistent with that.
Yeah, and 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 since I brought the item forth, I respect, I respect your concerns. And you know, obviously, that's why we're, that's why, why I'm going, I would like for the City Manager to take a look and see what we can do, because maybe that's just based on what he remembers, maybe there's more cities that have. So uh, we can just do a good uh study, et cetera. Um, but I like to go ahead with that May timeline, timeline as well, maybe a couple more meetings here, and then we can transition into that. But uh, and I'd like to kind of go do a roll call as to who's interested in moving ahead at right at the end of this, but go ahead, Councilwoman English?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, be sensitive to the fact that there are folks that have health concerns, you know? I don't think it's necessarily um looking like clowns. Uh, I think it's important to keep in mind that there's a lot of folks that have serious uh health conditions that um, you know, need to be, need to be respectful of, um. Yes, I think there's a lot of us who are tired and anxious of uh masking, unmasking, not sure to you know, what to do, because there's so many changes that have been um off and on, um. However, the testing also in, in, in my office continues in L A weekly. And it's similar to what Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, there's always someone that comes out positive. Um, so I think it's just one of those that needs to, we need to just tread lightly. Um, however, folks should choose to mask on the dais, that's their prerogative. Um, however, I would like to see additional precautions, if that's what everybody wants, um, you know, including um, shields in between um seats, seatmates.
Okay, so I'll respond to that too, and I know, I understand you say people have health concerns. It's not about looking like clowns, but um, I would think that people with health concerns wouldn't be coming to our City Council meetings. I think they know that they would not like to expose themselves, so I think that's, that'll naturally take care of it, so.
No, I think you misunderstood what I'm saying.
But that's, that's what I heard you say, but Councilmember Montero?
There might be. There might be people on the dais that have health concerns.
Yeah, you don't get it, it's okay.
Right.
Thank you for explaining uh, uh, Mayor Protem, appreciate it.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Well, I think that when, when you put politics aside, right, you need to look at the, at the science, what's going on, so. Uh, hospitalization is keep going down, the number of infected is going down. Uh, actually Hawthorne School District dropped their mandate, mask mandate since March nine. So it's volunteer for the parents, if the kids want to have mask or not. The Hawthorne School District Board has been meeting in person, but you know, since last month. Uh, so they have meeting at the dais in the, in Hawthorne School District, so, so we have some kind of precedent, so um. The thing is, yeah, we should start the beginning to put a date that we should come back and open City Hall, so. So if it's May, it's May, if it's June, it's June, but we should starting to, to go back to life uh as, as a post-pandemic, because now they have guideline of post-pandemic. So, so because the numbers are very decreased, uh even when, when I attend the sanitation district meeting, they show that uh the, the sewage, you know, because they keep tracking of the virus, now have gone down dramatically. Uh, they're not seeing the virus in, into the sewage, into the fifth feet, you know how everybody goes to the bathroom, they have to discharge. So that's one of the things that actually the federal government now are paying attention is all the sanitation and the sewage. To see how this virus is reacting in the community, so, and so, so right now is a very low. So, so there is now uh reason for us to begin to, to, to go back to normal. Because we never gonna get rid of the COVID nineteen, it's going to live with us. So some people's gonna get sick, some people are not gonna get sick, some people have to go get more vaccination, so uh, but life have to go on. So I do agree that we need to come up with a solution. And for example, if we want people to come to City Hall, they should be vaccinated, we should be even taking uh temperature. Uh, so, so all those kind of things have to be implemented, so, so we have to have a plan.
Uh, Councilmember Montero, um and then those on the, those are, those with the obviously from the public, we wouldn't be letting somebody in who's not vaccinated. An obvious high temperature would, you know, even vaccinated with high temperature will exclude them from coming in. A solution that I was thinking about was having a screen outside. So those who don't have a vaccination card, a screen with a microphone that they could talk to the city council from the outside, they can be in the pro- close proximity. That makes their council, city council government uh accessible. And if there's, if there's any concerns from any council member here that does not wanna come to the meeting because they have health concerns or some concerns about exposure for themselves, we can, we can uh
It's still do Zoom.
We can connect them in to the meeting while we're here, and that's the simple solution. Councilmember Valentine?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, so um I agree with Councilman uh Montero. Um, we're going to have some form of this virus with us for a very, very long time. But we really do have to get back to normal. Transmissions in the county are way down.
Yeah.
Deaths are way down. And um, I think there's no reason for us not to now have a plan to get back to as much of a normal situation as we can. Um, I'm perfectly fine with a hybrid situation if we wanna do that. If we want to have our meetings so that uh the council members can uh participate by Zoom. And perhaps the, the um, the audience be there in person. Or um if, you know, and with, with, with precautions being taken, that the audience, the audience members should be vaccinated and um their temperatures should be taken. Um, and I have, but I, but I, and as far as coming into the office. Um, I think it's time for us to open up the office and allow people to come and have their appointments. Again, if they're vaccinated and if they are, if, and their temperatures can be taken. But I think it's time, I think it's time for us to go back to normal, I've heard many many um of my, of our constituents say, when are you coming back? To the, when are you going to have council meetings again, when are you in person, when are you going to come back to normal? So I, I think it's time, I'm ready now at any time to go back to normal.
Um, and uh
Me too.
We, our, 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 our employees have been doing a great job of uh covering things here. They've been trying, working hard answering the phones, answering emails, and trying to help people at the counter who are coming in. It just makes it difficult when some people, when all they need, I had somebody that ended up having like an extra two months for an expedited permit. That should have only taken a week. If they would have been able to walk in and talk to somebody at the counter. They could have had one simple uh question answered and they could have gotten their uh permit wi- within an extra two days of being processed. So our, our employees again are doing an excellent job. It's just that this whole, it's just very awkward and it's very, I don't know, it's a clumsy process, you know, ha- having to make appointments and when, all they could be doing is walking in. So I think there's uh accommodations for everybody, uh by opening up, setting maybe like uh where, where are we right now, maybe in a, in a month or two, just setting like a definite date that we can come up with, that we're gearing towards. And just start making the accommodate, uh accommodations that we just mentioned during this meeting. Uh, Mister City Manager, you kind of took some notes as to the things that we talked about.
Absolutely, I did. Um, we can set a date in May or June, per the council's direction. Um. I think as I mentioned earlier, some of the say, we're discussing two different items. You know, meeting in person for council meeting, commission meetings, and reopening City Hall, so I think, you know, I need direction on both items. Um. You know, if we're gonna talk about setting a date for in-person council meetings, maybe the May tenth um date. We can put a plan together to bring back at the next council meeting for council's approval on what type of meeting we can host. Then I would ask additional time to put protocols in place for city staff as we uh progressively open the City Hall. Uh, one thing I want the council to think about is if we just open the doors as you're saying, Mister Mayor, and we have three people coming down to licensing. Uh, the wait is still gonna be there, you know, um. The time is still gonna be there that that resident would have to wait for service, so I don't know if just opening the doors as a floodgate resolves all the issues of being I think with appointments, you have your time slotted that you're available for a hundred percent of that staff's attention, so I just wanna make reference to that.
Okay, oh, no, 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 I mean, your point is well taken, because you have the, I have a bird's eye view, well, no, you have the bird's eye view. Because that would mean you have the bird's eye view, I have a perspective coming from when I get calls from people, maybe, maybe sometimes some of these people, uh individuals. Maybe they're not getting what they want or something, and they're just giving, but, but I, I would say amongst the plentiful calls I've gotten, you know, there has to be some truth to what they have to say as well. So can, can you present, would you, uh Mister City Attorney, would this be presented at the next meeting? As a discussion item, action item, or as a presentation?
Um, however you wanna direct the staff to do it, if you wanna do it as a presentation, uh we do have a COVID uh study team committee, uh that's chaired by Mister English. Um, we could take some recommendation from them as well, we could do a presentation as a general matter or or as a discussion action for you to take, come up with specific dates, um so, um.
Where would you think it's most appropriate as the city attorney?
Well, that's really not a city attorney call, it's, I, I think it would be fine if we have a presentation through the staff, so.
General matters, go ahead.
Yes, so we could just do a presentation as a general matter.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you, councilmembers. Well, thank you for your feedback, and actually, it's good that you, uh, any concerns or that were mentioned today, uh be addressed. So actually, this is a good thing. Um, okay. Do we have our uh city tre- city treasurer here today?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, can you please give us your report, any report, please?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I just wanna say that I think Finance Department is doing a great job and uh from the, the auditor's report we just saw. And they also, they're not even working with the full staff, so I, you know, I just wanna point that out that they're doing a great job and also you know, working with the limited staffs and uh, you know, like the director left. Um, coming back, I think also I, there's opportunities with uh like hybrid and stuff. You know, I think maybe some things can be done easier with people not going to the city or like don't miss the opportunity of providing services, you know, uh remotely. Because it could actually help a lot with the staff in the city, you know, versus, you know, somebody coming in and uh you know, all, all the waiting that goes around, if there's, if there's items that can be done virtually, we just, I think it's important to make it easier maybe for people to use those. Um, and other than that, um the city's uh, you know, been, been looking good. And then, I also wanna say that uh as the treasurer, looking over the, the report for checks, it is so much better now as far as um the information provided, so uh I just wanna say that that has trickled through, you know, uh when you're looking at the checks for approval. Rather than being, you know, so general, like I'm not sure what this is, uh I think it's, it's very detailed. So um I just wanna, you know, give a uh, a thumbs up to that, because it makes much easier to kind of review all the different checks with, you know, detailed uh descriptions. Uh, other than that, uh great meeting, everyone, and uh I'll leave it at that. Cheers.
Cheers, thank you so much. Uh Mister City Clerk?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, I just have a few things. Um, first of all, thank you for watching, watching from home. Uh, first of all, the Islamic Center of Hawthorne will be holding their annual Hawthorne Mosque Interfaith Dinner on April ninth at six thirty P M. Uh, if community members are interested in attending, please contact Omar Khalil at O M A R at I C H L A dot org. Uh, this is just a reminder from the announcement that was prior, provided from one of our speakers during public comments about the North Hawthorne Community Association, holding their annual Easter egg hunt on April second from eleven A M to twelve P M. Uh, at Euclid Park, uh please come out and enjoy the event with your fellow neighbors. Um, we were able to provide produce to about four hundred and fifty families at our food drive on Saturday about a week and a half ago. I wanna thank all our volunteers from various organizations and the American Heart Association for providing us the produce. Uh, we'll be in front of City Hall this Saturday from ten A M to twelve P M, providing produce and registering voters. Um, and lastly, I wanna thank Debbie Santos from Cable TV for stepping up to help our city clerk team with the agenda and other duties, as well as the Cable TV Department for sharing Debbie with us. Uh, our office appreciates the support. That's all on my end, I have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilmember Montero, por favor, please?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Again, uh, you know, great meeting, I wanna thanks all the staff, uh you know, from the city manage office, from the city attorney. From Public Works to the Finance, the Housing and Dual Sales, so fantastic report. So uh my hat goes off to you guys because you, you know, you do the work every day and to make us look good, so thank you for all your hard work out there. Um, just to mention a little bit about the, the auto communication, the call-up mentioned my name. Yes, I am very proud that um I want to build Hawthorne with smart housing, uh with homeownership. Because again, we only have about twenty percent homeowners and seventy-two percent are renters. But when she talking about the, the, the uh environmental justice re- report is, is the same as ten years ago. I was just elected in twenty eighteen, so I've been here just for four years, so you have to ask my colleague that's been here since two thousand nine, how they have improved the quality of life for the city of Hawthorne. If it's the same as ten years ago, so that's mean we are not doing a good job about it. So we have to be accountable, not just Montero, so that's my, my thing for the thing. Um. I have to say that, you know, uh, the some, the city manager and some staff from the, from the community service, from housing, we went to visit uh the two tiny homes, like they call them the bridge homes. Uh, one in uh Redondo Beach and one in uh um Ballen Park, and very beautiful uh facilities that is transitional homes for the homeless. They have one-stop service there, they have case manager, so those are the kind of things that we need to create uh right here in our city to make sure that these a hundred and fifty people that would count be on the street. We have a place to put them temporary, uh so then the outreach workers and, and, and social workers can follow them and move them into permanent housing. That's the only way we're going to get rid of these homeless in our streets, because we have a lot of homeless in our street. On Hawthorne Boulevard, on Inglewood, behind Ayers Hotel, on, on overpass. So, so we have to do something about that, so I'm, I'm, I'm glad that we are taking a proactive uh to help the homeless and, and, and I think we can do more, so that's my message about the homeless situation. Um, again, just a reminder, um, the El Camino uh send, send us um an invitation to go to the called Community Walk uh on Saturday, March twenty-sixth at ten A M at El Camino. But unfortunately, I'm not gonna be able to attend because I have to be in Costa Mesa in another conference. But if my colleagues can join the El Camino Community College, it's at El Camino Community Walks Against Hate. So it's, it's a good thing, so if you guys can do this, I appreciate it. Again, on April second, uh at eight to eleven thirty is the uh the museum is having a pancake breakfast, so you can go there and eat breakfast and then go to the uh North Hawthorne uh Egg Hunt, okay? And just to remind people that Hawthorne is having the uh Egg Hunt also on April nine, and it's Earth Day and Bunny Celebration. So it's from ten to two P M, we're gonna have a lot of community providers coming. We're gonna have about thirty different vendors, we're gonna have ice cream truck, we're gonna have the uh mobile clinic from the Hawthorne Imperial Alliance Club doing a free eye exam. So we've got a lot of good stuff, we're gonna have skate giveaway, so be there on April nine from ten to two P M. And before this meeting, I sent an email to uh Mister Vaughn and Mister Kim. Uh, because I received a communication from the Clean Power Alliance that would like us to give uh, uh a lot of support from our city, uh to be sent to the Assembly Team Garrison, A B eighteen fourteen, eighteen fourteen, it's an Assembly Bill eighteen fourteen, the Assembly Bill uh eighteen fourteen would authorize community choice aggregators to submit application to the California Public Utility Commission, C P U. To receive funding to administer transportation electrification program in service areas. So this is just to a lot of support, so, so all the CPAs can, can um write grants to bring money uh for our local jurisdictions to, for transportation certification, for all the Clean Power Alliance. And for the uh renewal of facilities, so if I can have a concord for us to send the uh a lot of support for A B eighteen fourteen, I appreciate it, Mister Mayor, and that's it for tonight.
You asking for a concurrence?
Yes.
Yeah, I concur, absolutely.
All right, so thank you and good night and God bless all.
Okay, no opposition, so passes.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Reyes English?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had an opportunity to visit Sanctuary of Hope, it's a nonprofit organization, providing um homeless services and uh programs to our youth uh in the city of Hawthorne, they re- they're over on Hawthorne Boulevard at um Fortieth and Hawthorne Boulevard. Uh, the organization has been uh in our city for a number of years. Uh, I remember between myself and Councilmember Montero, we actually provided a welcome basket to some youths that moved into an apartment here in Hawthorne that they shared. And so that's important to know that in an organization such as Sanctuary's Hope, of Hope is here. They were also part of our um housing element, uh and were listed as a provider, so that's important to know. Um, I also had an opportunity to attend uh the V F W Post Breakfast, and they have that every third Sunday of the month. So it was good to have, participate in the breakfast, and they actually have a really good breakfast, um and thank you to the V F W Post for that. Um, I also want to um see if we could uh, Vaughn, if we could maybe bring someone to speak on the Solar Panel Association. And uh that was something that I've been working on since last year, when uh we've had residents uh reach out to myself here in the city and, and you with regards to um the Solar Panel Association and how residents are still uh unfamiliar with the processes for submitting requests, applications, permits, et cetera, for the installation and exact cost of uh Installation and exact cost of, uh, those services. Um, I understand there's a, a cost that's mandated with the state of California, however, there seems to be still a disconnect between. Our staff here that processes those permits up in planning and, uh, the association. So if we could get that spread away and then ultimately bring it to the, uh, council on an agendized item so that we could make, um. Policy and, and, you know, have that once and for all, uh, language. Um, what else? I think that should do it for now. Um. I understand that there's been some tours and, and we're looking at, uh, the, the pellet shelter housing. So look forward to moving that forward once and for all. I still not sure i- if we've decided on a number. Exactly how many we're looking at, uh, that number was tossed up from forty to thirty to. So I just hope that we're reasonable with regards to what we're looking at and, uh, could, could do what, what. You know, not to overextend ourselves, basically. Uh, cause at the end of the day, I think, uh, the city would still have to be able to do the upkeep. And to provide, um, you know, the, the resources that is gonna be needed at the location. But, uh, I like, um, ultimately the, the work that we've been doing to address our homeless. And our, uh, outreach to encampments, we still have work to do. I know there's frustration among some residents that I've heard from with regards to still, um. You know, the, the public defecation, urination that is occurring in front of people. People's eyes and children and stuff like this, and we need to address that, um. Again, with mental health services, behavioral health services, and special, uh, specialized, um. Training to assure that we get those folks help, the help they need. And, um, we've come a long way with regards to, um, just being able to implement that in our city in the last ten years. Uh, we've taken a very aggressive role in addressing, uh, all of the needs through services, programs, and those alike, so. I wanna continue to push in that, um, quality of life for us is very important here in the city of Hawthorne. From, you know, not just everyday, uh, need, but, you know, this includes. Blighted communities and blighted, um, properties that we still have to get rid of. And ultimately bring, um, good, good sit-down restaurants, good shopping experience. Um, and those are things that I continue to, you know, emphasize that we need to push harder on. And, uh, our city's growing, it's quite evident, it's growing, so. Uh, for the most part, thank you Vaughn, thank you City Attorney, uh, thank you Felice for tonight's presentation and Public Works. Um, our police and all that they're doing, um, to help with our homeless and, um. Our outreach workers from Lhasa to, uh, all the other organizations and Mrs., um, Medina tonight, thank you. For your presentation also, and that should do it, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so at the Cog Senior Services Working Group. The California Department of Aging's Director Susan De Marwa, Marwa. Made a presentation this morning introducing the State's Master Plan for Aging. The five goals of the State's Master Plan for Aging are, housing for all ages and stages. Health reimagined, inclusion and equity, not isolation, caregiving that works, and affordable aging. The master plan she also described has a data dashboard. Which is, which is set up to measure the progress of different communities, of, of all the communities actually. Um, I actually went and looked at the data dashboard and she's suggesting that. The communities have a facilitator to work with the state to, um, come up with a plan for their own communities. I've looked at the data dashboard, it's very, very complicated, it's not something that we, that one person can do. I'm going to, to direct staff to consult the director at the California Department of Aging. And discuss what the city would need to do in terms of staff and resources to utilize the data dashboard. To help our citizens find the best quality of life for the aging process. It's a beautiful, um, pro- project, I mean, it's a very impressive project. But it looks to me like it's something that's very complex and would require additional staff. Or, and, and definitely an, a- additional, adi- additional resources that, possibly even a consultant, so I'd like for. Um, I'm, I'm requesting that the, um, staff look into this and, and determine what exactly would be needed. And in order to do that, I'm directing staff to contact the Department of, of Aging. And you could even contact the Director Susan De Marwa and speak with her. And I'm sure she'd be happy to speak with, with, with you to, to give you guidelines as to how to implement the State's program. Um, we could even possibly even involve the, um, Senior Commission on this. But it's, it's a great program for the benefit of our aging population, and I really recommend that we take advantage of it if we can. Um, I wanna thank Chief Ishii for the very informative monthly newsletter, which lets us see at a glance. The challenges that our H P D men and women face every day. I appreciate the thorough reports from all the bureaus, giving us great insight as to how decisions are made. In real time in order to apprehend suspects and keep our communities safe. And my last item is pickleball is coming to Hawthorne. If you remember last year. We had a, uh, an opening at Grand, at, at Ramona Park, in which we actually, we actually, uh, played pickleball. And it, it was, it was said that we wanted to implement it in the city of Hawthorne at some point. So I followed up on it because I'm, I'm very concerned and very interested, it's really something that people can play at all ages. It doesn't require a lot of skill to start, and many communities have become addicted to it. And I'm going to thank Vaughn and thank the Parks, uh, Parks and Recreation Department for beginning the process. So we're going to actually have pickleball in July at Ramona Park. So I wanna encourage everyone to show their interest, and, um, it's going to be every Saturday. In, in the month of July. Um, and the reason for the limited time period is because we don't have staff. To, um, to have it any, any, eh, eh, for any longer period of time. But for the time we have it, I'm really looking forward to it, and, um, so pickleball in Ha- in Hawthorne at last, in July. And that's all I have, thank you all.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman. Are there any go-bags from anybody?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I thought, uh, Ms. Valentine was gonna mention, but she forgot to mention about the, um, South Bay Cock. Uh, Annual Conference that's coming up to, on the twenty-fourth. Uh, the South Bay Caucus happening, uh, Annual Assembly at the, uh, Carson Community Center at the nine A M. On the twenty-fourth, from nine to two, they're having their assembly, okay? And the other thing that we should know about is the, um, the Air Force Base, you know, the coalition over there. They still struggling about the air mans, you know, all the, all the, 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 their staff. Still fighting about paying very high rents. So they have issues about finding housing that is affordable for the, uh. For the people that work at the Air Force Base, especially the air mans that come, uh, to stay at the Air Force Base and work at the Air Force Base. So, um, I asked Vaughn, uh, to put them in, in contact with the, uh, South. The South Bay Millennium Project, uh, the housing across SpaceX to see. Uh, if they can qualify, you know, under that, uh, uh, seventy to a hundred percent household median income. Because they struggling to pay, to pay rent, because the rents, uh, is very sky-high in the area. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Patterson? Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanna thank the community for, for tuning in and paying attention, uh, just following what's happening in your government. And for calling in and making your voices heard, I think that's just, uh, just amazing thing to do. Uh, I am, uh, I'm out of town, uh, by the way, I'm out in Las Vegas and, uh, Government Investment Officers Association. Has an annual conference, so I'm here, uh, um, City of Carson sent me here to, uh, attend this annual conference. And so, uh, I definitely plan on bringing some information back to the city of Hawthorne. But I, I only bring it up because, you know, I, I wish, uh, City of Hawthorne was represented at this conference as well. Uh, I've always gotten a lot of great value, uh, from this Investment Officers, uh, Conference. Um, one other thing, let me look at my notes. Uh, I think it was about a year ago, previous city manager had us go through a list of, of priorities, um, that the council had. Um, things that we want to pursue, um, and so I'm asking our current city manager. If you can kind of find that list of priorities, um, and come back with, uh, kind of a status update of, you know. You know, what, what have we addressed, what's still outstanding, and maybe, um, even discuss doing a similar exercise again. Uh, depending upon, you know, how well we've, we've attacked those, those things that were, um, in our list of to-dos or, or priority lists. But I think that's a great exercise for us to do, um, leading into beginning of any fiscal year, to really set our priorities. As a council and kind of be clear about what we're pursuing. Um, outside of that, met with the economic development. Um, what is it, what are we calling it? It's a?
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc. Ad hoc commission, um, and, um, you know, we, we've, uh, discussed a lot of different ideas of. How to attract some business to the city, as well as discuss some ideas of, um, you know, how to guide development in the city. And so we've been, um, reaching out to, um. Developers, landowners, um, to be able to kind of discuss some of those ideas and really get a good, um. You know, brainstorm what's really possible for the city, also discussing, uh, how to really promote the city of Hawthorne. As being open for business and being business friendly, so we've been, been working with our, um. Our real estate consultant that the city has to help us kind of devise a plan to, to really promote, uh, the city of Hawthorne, um. You know, to the business community, so just wanna make sure, you know, kind of updated the community about those meetings and what we're going on, what's going on there. But that's essentially it, I hope everybody, you know, has a great week.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Alright, let me see. So, uh, as for myself, let's see, this is my end of the meeting report. I think I would, uh, thank you all, councilmembers, for providing your feedback on all the different things that we've, uh, been, uh. When, what you guys have been following up on, your new ideas, giving feedback on other people's ideas. So it's essential, the community members for expressing themselves. And, uh, what I wanted to do, let me get this, I wanted just to make sure that the residents of the city of Hawthorne know that. Congresswoman Maxine Waters, uh, is going to be here tomorrow in our City Hall chambers for a, uh. For the awarding of money that she's been able to obtain for us. I mean, it's, uh, she does a lot, she does so much for us as a city, and we never. Give her recognition for this, so, uh, we were able to coordinate with her for her to be here while she's, uh, here from Washington D C. She's gonna be presenting checks not only to us, five hundred thousand dollars for the Hawthorne Affordable Housing Improvements Project. Which is gonna be of great benefit to the community, uh, two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the V F W. Rehabilitation project for their facility, and five hundred thousand dollars for the South Bay Whibs, uh, Workforce Development Pro- Project. So she does so much for us, and I think it's, uh, very important that we let her know that we really appreciate her. And so that's why we're going to be here, she's gonna present this to us, and we're gonna thank her, uh, ourselves as a city council, we're gonna thank her for what she does for us.
Can we give her a proclamation or something?
We'll talk offline and we'll try to get something in time for tomorrow. Vaughn, can you see if you can coordinate something? You can draft up the message and please put my signature on there, and, and if everybody else concurs, okay? Yeah, let's get something nice that looks nice for him. So you guys, uh, we just wanna let you know. Um, space is limited due to social distancing and safety protocols, is this open to the public, Vaughn? Or no?
No, we're only gonna host, uh, minimum amount of folks in there, but it will be televised.
It'll be televised, so.
Yes, sir.
Until we have our ad hoc COVID Safety Committee look at all the, uh. All the sa- precautions that we need to take to open up, we'll open up, but we're not ready to do that yet, so this will be televised, so. Um, just keep your eye out for it on cable TV.
What clock?
Huh?
Four P M.
Yeah, but I don't think it's gonna be televised live, will it be televised live? Vaughn?
Uh, Eric, could you, could you give me an update on that, please, Eric? Is, will it be live or taped?
We could do it live if we should it like a council meeting.
Would that be, would that make sense? Would that be kind of a, would you be able to pan in and out and capture? Uh, her presenting to us in front of the, uh, seats, in the middle of the chambers?
Would she be, uh, standing, yeah, where the podium, the, the podium's at?
Yeah.
I think so, so, uh, and, uh, then you can pan if she's gonna, we're gonna take pictures over here on the other side of the, uh, podium.
Yeah, we could make, we could make it work if that's what you guys like.
See if you can dust off those cameras?
Exactly.
Dusting, dusting.
And get them ready, see if you can dust them off, right?
We'll do a full run-through tomorrow morning and make sure everything's good to go.
You see how much it's already moved towards the reopening? Alright, guys, uh, but thank you, guys. Uh, so. I did, these are a couple of questions for our city manager, um, I, Dulce, I don't think Dulce is here anymore, is she? No, it doesn't appear that she is.
Oh.
Uh, well, Mr. City Manager, our homeless service task force, how many people does it, uh, consist of? And, uh, what's the budget for the homeless service task force?
Well, the task force, uh, when I was operating the task force, we would have, uh, twelve to fifteen members. Uh, there's no budget for the task force, there's a budget for, uh, the compensation for Dulce or any staff members that we have. Contributing efforts to homeless services.
So would we say, can we say that these twelve to fifteen members, they're performing this, uh, their role as a. Homeless Service Task Force as part of their duties, uh, regular duties?
No, no, it's volunteers, so, Mr. Mayor, there's volunteers from other service provider groups that we take input from. So we have people from the school district, Lhasa, PATH, uh, St. Margaret's, city staff, uh, Councilmember Montero would regularly attend. So there's no, um, pay to play for the, the, the task force.
Pay to play? You know, you have to change. You gotta change your words there, that doesn't even make sense, man.
It's all volunteer.
No, pay to play? No, so, uh, so it's volunteers, okay, good, and, uh, what would the role of a director for this? Kind of roundabout, would that be under a hundred thousand, fifty, or would that be more, uh? What would that budget, just like a hundred thousand?
Well, the city, the city received a hundred thousand dollars from L A County for eighteen months of service for a homeless service coordinator.
Do these services offer medical services and, uh, mental health services?
Uh, St. Margaret Mary, who we have a partnership with, they do have those resources available.
Okay, and so, from what I'm hearing, they were able to reach a hundred and five people? And it seems like they've housed a hundred and, they've offered a great service of housing people. And they reached a hundred and five people over the course of how long?
It looks like just from this quarter report, uh, this was in the last three months, three to four months, that she was able to establish those numbers.
So a hundred and five people reached by our, our team, and, uh, there's about two, like, two, a hundred and twenty that were not. Able to be housed, so, um, I think those are great numbers, half the people that they were able to come in contact. Were given some type of service, a major service, which is housing over there, uh.
Temporary, Mr. Mayor, temporary housing, temporary housing.
Temporary housing, absolutely, it is temporary housing, but still, a roof over the head in times of need, and other services. So, uh, well, I, some of the questions that I kind of wanted to hear about were, um. I wanted to get a, some type of profile and get some cross tabs about the, uh, the. People that they interacted with, but I think the homeless that count was mostly just literally a count without interaction with the individuals, is that correct?
Yes, that, that is correct.
Okay, so. Okay, so maybe as uh the task force ends up interacting with people, if we could start just getting numbers and try to. Get some standard questions answered, so we can kind of come up with like uh. Some some data, a spread as to how many people are have a uh mental health uh issues. Maybe drug, the drug use, if possible, we can find that out, how many lost their homes, how many are from Hawthorne. Have cross tabs on all that, so we can kind of understand what kind of services we need to focus on to be able to help these individuals. And then I I'm also interested in the refusal of service uh category as well. I know that there are people out there that argue, oh, a lot of them refuse services, so I just kind of want to get to the root of it. And have our people here in the city of Hawthorne do our own, our own specific uh study on that. So that we can talk intelligently as to what's happening here in the city of Hawthorne. Can you kind of try to incorporate that, Mister City Manager?
Yes, what type of uh, how would you want that information referred to? Because um some items that you're mentioning, uh the homeless service coordinator actually has that per case. So when they do an intake form, they have that information.
Yeah, well, I mean, I could talk to her, just kind of give her some ideas. Just kind of just to help us be able to do what we can. Okay, but and then one of the things though that I'm really concerned is. I think Hawthorne is a uh pioneer when it comes to the homeless services uh. Uh teams that we have here in the city of Hawthorne, we are a pioneer. And so people know that we are offering these services, so I think that's a great thing. And so some people actually are coming to us um to get those services. And uh but I have a great concern though. Um as you guys remember or have seen, the city of Los Angeles has done these sweeps. Where they're removing people forcefully from specific areas. There are other cities, local cities here in the South Bay are not offering services like we do. And are uprooting people, um homeless individuals and not offering services. They're starting to come up with their service, but we've had a longstanding tradition of being able to help those that are in-house. So I'm really concerned that they're not doing their part, contributing to the pride uh to the. To the to the situation. And I think that that's very irresponsible, it's disrespectful for us as a city when they guide them to us. As opposed to doing what they have to 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 meet their need over there, where they're at. So this needs to be a regional solution and it's.
May I, may I interject, please?
Well, then let me finish, let me finish my thoughts and I'll let you uh give feedback if you want. Uh it needs to be a regional solution and uh I'm not convinced that it has been. A regional solution, so I think we need to move towards that. What?
Uh okay, so um and Vaughn can can help me on this one. Because we we go to the, they're called the South Bay Cock Homeless Task Force every two months. Okay, so we attend those meetings, it's from two to five PM. So we got providers that's coming from all over the SPAT eight, all these different cities. Uh because all of them have uh outreach coordinators like we do, like Dulce. Redondo Beach, um Manhattan Beach, um got, you know, Carson, got in all these different. San Pedro, they come, we came all, we come all together, there is a regional solution, that is why. For example, South Bay Cock gave us that money for that lacada. Remember that uh uh Dulce is talking about the lacada, that service that they have, uh mental health and alcohol programs? So that came from the regional solution, so it's not just Hawthorne getting that service, Inglewood is getting it. Uh some other cities in South Bay are getting those those services. So there is a regional solution, that's what we need every two months to deal with all the SPAT eight issue of homeless. So we got, we got, you know, uh interface base, coming and present, give a story, how much people they house, how much people they send to. Alcohol and drinking program, we have the PAT, talk about their service, okay? So so we got some medical centers there, so we got all these providers talking about service, we got the, you know, behavioral health service. So so there is program that's going on in different cities. And 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 for example, like Redondo Beach, they're the first one in 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 South Bay have put those tiny homes. They have fifteen tiny homes behind the mall there, the 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 South uh gallery. Uh Torrance is going to build those tiny homes, so everybody is 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 doing something. You're you're accurate when you said that LA City, you know, when they starting to move people out of those in campus. You know, some people do not go to shelter, some people do not go to uh housing, so they move somewhere else. They come, you know, whatever they 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 think they can go south or they can go north. But we know people are relocating these homeless in different part. And 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 South Bay, uh we are dealing with with them, so there is a reason solution. So that is where Hawthorne is doing their part, some other cities doing their part, maybe we're doing more than some other cities. But at least we have numbers to show that because, remember, the people of uh LA County vote to create the Laza. That is is, you know, the authority uh for homeless that gave monies away to create program. So there is a reason solution going on, it's just like everybody's overwhelmed. And that is where we need to come up with programs that have to have temporary housing for at least ninety days. So we can be able to move these people and they've been housing them like in Lancaster, in San Bernadette, in different places. Not just around this area.
Okay, let me, so let me finish now, but like I'll I'll just uh thank you for attending those meetings, thank you. If this is something that's happening, it's recent, because previous years, we've had. And Councilwoman English knows, you know, she's been, we had these issues that uh where. If what you're talking about uh is out there.
It is.
It is a recent thing, it hasn't been.
But since twenty eighteen, I'm attending those meetings, Mister Mayor.
Recent thing that they're doing, so we've had this issue for a long time. Okay, so uh I still, I still uh believe that. Uh the city of Los Angeles is doing a disservice and uprooting pe- people without uh. Really uh addressing what they uh, you know, their needs. The county sheriffs is uprooting them.
Yeah.
And produces comments today, some of our neighbors here in the area have also been uh doing that. Those who are might be recent additions to that South Bay uh regional solution, cog solution. So that still stands, so I mean. Karate for the people over there in Redondo Beach that have those tiny homes or whatever the uh specific housing uh units are. And I think we should do some, we should go ahead and move some towards that and get that done, absolutely, to start the transition. Okay, but if if I don't see other cities doing the same, I think Torrance is doing it, right?
Yeah, Torrance is going to be.
And the only other place is Redondo Beach and we would be the third, that still leaves how many other cities in the South Bay?
Well, eventually they'll get there.
Well, but the thing is, we're, we've, people are following our lead and we can't deny it. And we're bold and we're doing something about it. So I'm still concerned that they need to uh up their game when it comes to certain things, okay? Um so thank you for your feedback though and uh. But also, um I also share, Councilwoman, I'm I'm going to finish because we got to get out of here, uh Councilwoman Angie Reyes English made a point. Uh that residents shouldn't be having to have to see or have their children see. People defecating in public, urinating in public, going into people's law uh law lawn area. To use a hose to take, to wash themselves and shower, um going into people's backyards. These are all complaints that I've heard, my priority will always be the residents of the city of Hawthorne who who choose to live here. Okay, my priority will always be them, but we also need to have a balanced approach on uh helping those who are in-house, okay? We need to focus on that, okay?
Amen.
But it is the residents, okay, because they don't deserve to see that stuff. Oh, and the last thing I wanted to mention, wouldn't you guys, haven't you ever thought and heard people argue, well, what? If these people don't want to uh uh ta- get mental health services, why don't they just yank them off the street? And take them there forcefully? Pretty, seems like a pretty like sensible solution, because they need the help, how are they going to ask them, do you want some help? And you're, you know, if you're having mental issue or some challenges, you're not gonna choose to do that. Okay, so it makes common sense to maybe usher them and help them out that way. But no, it's hasn't been BC until who makes that suggestion? Our governor up in Sacramento, okay? So he started to talk about stuff like that and uh. I guess, I don't know if it's just talk or what, but there has to be some type of protocol if we're going to be moving towards that direction. I think he needs to be careful what he says, because um there could be some repercussions. But in some ways, that could be a good thing, if we're able to help them be more proactive and able to. Okay, so I think that's it for me. Uh I appreciate everybody for their feedback.
Ms. Valentine, have her hands up.
Councilwoman Valentine, what's going on?
Just a, just a, uh just a go back on what you said. I have a concern, uh and and I and I share your desire to to help as many as we can. And with the, I think the pallet shelters is a good idea, I think we should do that. But if we miss the boat, as I am concerned. That the majority of these people who are on the street are not on the street because they don't have housing. I I believe that many, many of them are on the street because they need mental health services. Rehab services, all sorts of other services. If we miss the boat and build shelters. I'm afraid if that's, if we don't solve the problem, we'll still have the problem, because that is not, that may not be the solution. So we need to get it right, if it 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 may not be shelters. That might not be what the everyone needs, we we may have to pivot. And provide mental health services and all sorts of other services. Because I I believe that the majority of the people who are on the street are not on the street because. They got kicked out of their housing or because they can't find housing or because the rent is too high. I think there are many, many other social mi- social reasons why they're on the street. That's that's really all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I'm going to close this up, man, you guys, this is like an action discussion item, thank you guys, but you know, there was a. But it's it's a very important topic, you know, you know, it's that important that everybody here started wanting to talk about it and stuff, so. I think it's good, your point was well taken, Councilwoman Valentine. But it's like a a wound that is uh that is that is bleeding. You're right, you know, you're stopping the bleeding by, you you're stopping the bleeding uh. By having these these homes, they're still necessary, I don't, I'm not going to say that they're not. They're they're gonna be necessary, but you're right, there has to be that other, you need to take care of those other areas to get to the root of the issue. So I think we need to consider all those things. The reality is, okay, we, that's why I'm asking for this information, right uh right uh refusal of services. Um you know, how, what's the uh, what's the, what's the characteristic and profile of these peoples? So we can understand what we have to deal with, so we can speak intelligently. Right now we can't, I can't, because I don't have that complete profile and all the data, okay? Alright, thank you guys, uh appreciate it, that's it, it's eight forty-five. So uh thank you all for being here, this meeting is adjourned at.
Bye.
Before I bang uh the thing, let's just kind of uh have a, have a just a brief moment of silence for those people who have passed in the Ukraine. And that, God willing, you know, that he comes and helps them out over there. So through God's holy intervention, that there may be peace in the Ukraine. Uh this meeting is adjourned at.
Yep.
Uh eight forty-four.